Good evening, everyone. Hello, we're gonna get started, thank you. Good evening. All right, we are reconvening from closed session and there is nothing to report, so we will adjourn the special meeting at 6:00 PM. And that takes us into our regular city council meeting. I would like to call to order the Elk Grove City Council regular meeting. Today is Wednesday, April 26, 2023. It is 6:00 PM. Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. This meeting of the Elk Grove City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T/Universe cable systems. The meeting is closed captioned, it'll be webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Tonight's meeting replays will be on Friday, April 28 at 1:00 PM and Saturday, April 29 at 7:00 PM on Channel 14. Previous meetings can be viewed online at www.ellgrovecity.org or youtube.com/MetroCable14. For members of the participating audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting or on mute when you are not speaking. Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the city council meeting. City Council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person so that all present will have time to participate. City Council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular noticed agenda item as it may deem necessary. Pursuant to Resolution Number 2010-24, no individual speaker concerning public comment may address the city council for more than three minutes. If you wish to address the council during the meeting, please complete one of the blue speaker cards, which can be found at the back of the chamber and provided to Assistant City Clerk Brenda Hager prior to consideration of the agenda item. With that, Mayor, we will move into the roll call for the meeting. And I will start the roll call with Councilmember Robles.
President.
Councilmember Brewer.
Here.
Councilmember Soon.
Here.
Vice Mayor Spees. And Mayor Singh Allen.
Here.
All members are present.
Uh, let's see, next up is our Pledge of Allegiance. And if you would please join us. And I will have our Vice Mayor lead us in the pledge.
Hand over heart, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And now I would like to invite you all to join us in a brief moment of silence. Thank you. All right, next up, we have our approval of the agenda. May I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item?
Under Section 3, there are no closed session items on the regular agenda, which will advance us to Section 4, Presentations and Announcements, starting with Item 4.1, which is a recognition of Toto &amp; Poco's Bistro's 25th Anniversary. Sorry if I said that wrong.
All right, I would like to call up Marie Mertz. And presenting will be Councilmember Darren Soon.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Marie. Nice to see you. Where's Manny? Is he here?
Working.
Oh, of course. You know, before I read this, and I think it's not too long, but before I read, I just want to tell a quick story, you know. It was the end of the year 2000, and my wife and our newborn child moved into our home in Elk Grove. And finished, it's one of those nights, anybody who's moved into a home knows this story. You finish unpacking your boxes, it is late, you don't know what you're gonna do for dinner. And you're in a new town, and you start looking around where you can get something to eat. And we've, you know, just Googling, found Toto &amp; Poco. And that was our first time we had a meal at your restaurant. And we loved it ever since and loved attending it. And since then, of course, so many of us in the community have visited your restaurant and continue to eat there. And so we're so thankful that you're part of our community and honored to honor you tonight. So whereas on your 25th anniversary, Toto &amp; Poco, located at, and those of you who are listening who don't know, 9080 Laguna Main Street, Suite 1A, right across from the Apple Building there, in Elk Grove, California, is an experience to immerse into that must be seen and tasted to be believed. Combining fantastic foods, amazing art, and cosmopolitan company, beyond the exquisite dining experience, the venue is a spectacle to the passion instilled in creating a setting that is inviting to families and friends to gather and share and enjoy. And whereas Toto &amp; Poco has earned numerous accolades and many Best Restaurant readers polls for the display of cross-pollination of different cuisines, in the words of Marie Mertz, "Food is like art. It should always be different." And whereas Toto &amp; Poco is a locally owned, family operated gem that pairs Mexican and Italian cuisines in a refreshing menu, and the Mertz family continues their ongoing investment and care of the area, creating a center of activity for social gatherings, providing a wonderful venue and experience for the community to come together and celebrate. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council, the city of Elk Grove, hereby extends its congratulations to Toto &amp; Poco on the occasion of its 25th anniversary celebration, expressing our sincere gratitude for the tenderness and commitment taken to preserve a culinary and cultural epicenter tied to the community, breathing life into a spectacular neighborhood and imparts our hope that the Toto &amp; Poco continues to experience a successful and prosperous future. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Would you like to say anything?
Yeah, I just wanna say thank you to all of you and to the whole community for supporting us all these years. We have felt part of this community of Elk Grove since the day one we came in. I think I spent more of my life here in Elk Grove than what I did in Mexico originally, where I'm from. Our community has been so important for us from the day that we opened Toto &amp; Poco 25 years ago. And we always had that commitment to be part of the community. And I believe that we have a social responsibility, and I encourage all the local businesses to do the same, to look for a little cause, to do something about it, to contribute to the community in that place that we call home. We participated before in the Multicultural Diversity Committee, Art in Public Places Ordinance, and now I'm actually working on organic food waste awareness. It is important that we all do that, and hopefully we can do something together with the city to create more awareness of the importance that it is to be a responsibility business in the community. Thank you very much for your talk.
Wonderfully said, wow. He'll come down there. And you know what I love about going to Toto &amp; Poco is Marie knows exactly what I want. Every time we go there, I don't even need a menu. And I just love going to that restaurant. It is absolutely one of my favorite in our city. Thank you. Let's come down there and get a photo. All right, next up is our recognition of California North State University for providing vaccination clinics and pandemic support. And presenting will be our Vice Mayor. And I'd like to call up Dr. Chung and other representatives from California North State University.
Thank you, Mayor Allen.
Good evening.
Hi, good evening.
All right. Well, since we're sharing personal stories, before I get started, during the pandemic, I had the opportunity to spend a lot of time with Dr. Chung and with the CNU staff, as well as members of APAPA. And to go to a number of distributions where CNU was providing a lot of masks and a lot of hand sanitation, or hand sanitizer throughout the community. And so I'm really glad to see this today because I think that memorializes not just that, but a few other things, so. So the city of Elk Grove recognizes and appreciates California North State University for vaccine and pandemic response support. CNU was founded in 2015 and has been expanding to create healthcare workforce opportunities. The CNU has a strong commitment to the community, including building programs through the Elk Grove Unified School District to help children learn science and improve public school science equipment access. And at the state level by fighting for funding for dental care for children with special needs. And as I mentioned before, the COVID-19 vaccination was available, CNU became a vital testing center for Elk Grove in the Sacramento region. During the pandemic, CNU was the first in the region to step up and protect the community by gathering enough immunizations, excuse me, immunizers, people who go out and immunize, to address COVID-19 and subsequently administered over 45,000 COVID-19 and influenza vaccines across multiple clinics and the site. CNU again utilized their forces to protect the community during the monkeypox outbreak by being proactive and distributing vaccine. So I want to thank the City Council of the city of Elk Grove, hereby commends the California North State University system and its president, Dr. Alvin Chung, for helping the people of Elk Grove stay healthy. So thank you, Dr. Chung, did you have?
Yes, thank you. First of all, I'd like to make a brief introduction. On my right is Dr. Regulow, is a well-known interventional cardiologist. And on my left is the Clinical Department Chair of the Pharmacy College. And then Dr. Low served as the medical director for the vaccine clinic while I was the administrator for the clinic itself. And then Dr. Lee representing the dean, Siao Dong Fang, to organize all the immunizers, as you just mentioned. We do five days a week after school and then provide all the necessary immunization to not only the teachers and staff for the Elk Grove School Districts who wish to be vaccinated, they all get vaccinated. And then guess what? The school district of City of Elk Grove was the first school district in the whole state of California. We turned back to in-person teaching. And so I just want to make that remark. The other thing is that, from the university perspective, we already see Elk Grove is our home. Personally, I spend more time in the city of Elk Grove than my other home. So we are honored today to be recognized for our work. And I'd like to ensure that my, you know, medical director here got recognized and my clinical chair also got recognized. And we really appreciate this opportunity for us to serve the community. And that is, you know, the mission of the university. With that?
Thank you.
Mayor Singh Allen, thank you. Members of the council, thank you.
We'll be right down. I want to personally recognize, you know, outside of the words in the proclamation, you know, getting our kids back to the classroom was instrumental. And you played a critical role vaccinating our teachers. And it was very coordinated and very efficient. I'm at an opportunity to visit those sites. And here we are, three years from the launch of those efforts. And so it's quite remarkable that it's been three years. So this was the appropriate time, I think, you know, three years later, to recognize your efforts in helping to keep our community safe. We appreciate the partnership and of course, the numerous events that take place at the campus. And then most recently, the East-West Health Fair, where I had an opportunity to visit and speak, was quite remarkable. Just thousands of people attending, so congratulations once again for your efforts.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our next item is 4.3, Proclamation Recognizing April 28, 2023 as Arbor Day. And helping to present that is Councilmember Sergio Robles. And we will call up the Sacramento Tree Foundation. All right.
How's it going? Good evening. Before I actually, before I begin reading the proclamation, I also want to say I'm super appreciative of what the Sacramento Tree Foundation does. I've been able to partner throughout several different communities, especially the neighborwoods communities, where we go into disenfranchised areas and partner with the Kings, partner with Sacre Republic, and do tree plantings and get the families involved, and also certain partners in the community. So for me, I love planting trees. I have a goal where I set myself, I'm gonna try to plant at least 100 in different times, you know?
Good for you.
So thank you for what you're doing in the city of Elk Grove and thank you for what you're doing in the whole Sacramento region.
Well, we try, and it was great to see you at the events, as always.
We, I think it was 100 trees, correct, on White Lock that they were planting right along near Franklin?
Yeah, just on that day. So over the last two years, along White Lock Parkway, we planted over 1,800 trees. So we are very excited to foster our relationship with the city of Elk Grove. We're honored to be working here. They've been phenomenal partners, especially Alec Lepper, who's with us today. We, there's so many benefits to having trees in an urban environment. And we're so happy to be providing those resources to the community. And we're excited to continue that in the future.
Perfect, well, I know that we're gonna have a lot of shade here in Elk Grove pretty soon, so.
And we have more to come. If anyone's interested in planting trees and getting dirty, we are gonna continue doing that.
I'll read the proclamation, Arbor Day, April 28, 2023. Whereas Arbor Day festivities have been observed for over 150 years in recognition of the importance of trees and urban forest to the livability and sustainability in the American cities and communities. Whereas the city of Elk Grove is committed to optimizing the remarkable benefits of trees to create the best urban forest for the Sacramento region. Whereas the city of Elk Grove has adopted an urban forestry program to improve the quality of life for all residents of Elk Grove and recognizes the contributions from the tree canopies and to have clean air, water, and energy conservation, public health, and habits that beautify our neighborhood and our business district. Whereas Elk Grove has partnered with the Sacramento Tree Foundation and support the foundation's efforts to educate and advocate for urban forest. Whereas more than 200 volunteers have planted over 1,300 new trees in Elk Grove since 2020. Whereas the city of Elk Grove, in coordination with the Sacramento Tree Foundation, will conduct Arbor Day tree planting on April 28, 2023. So if anyone doesn't have anything to do on that day, please come out.
Please do.
Now, and therefore, it will be resolved that the city council and the city of Elk Grove proclaims April 28, 2023 as the city of Elk Grove's Arbor Day. And we'll go down there and take a photo.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Do you have anything else that you would want to add?
Please come out and plant trees. That's all we have to say. There are so many opportunities. We at the Sacramento Tree Foundation, always looking for volunteers. The vast majority of what we do is only capable through volunteers. And it's for your community, and we're so excited to give people those resources. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
One, two, three, and one more. One, two, three.
Thank you, congratulations.
Congratulations.
All right, next up is the presentation of the 2023 Mayor's Volunteer Awards. All right, so April is National Volunteer Month, a month dedicated to recognizing the importance of volunteering and honoring the significant contributions that volunteers make by generously donating their time and talents to worthy causes. One of the honors I have as mayor is to recognize Elk Grove residents who volunteer their time and talent to make Elk Grove a better place to call home. Our annual Mayor's Volunteer Awards are open to individuals, groups, businesses, agencies, and organizations whose volunteer activities directly benefit our community. We recognize residents in six different categories. With so many deserving nominations submitted for this program each year, it is quite difficult to choose who's gonna be the recipient. I want to thank the group that assisted me with the reviewing of this year's applications. Councilmember Darren Soon, Jody Moreno, Crystal Love-Lazard, Carrie Monte, Tina Lee Vogt, Michael Hill, Jahida Bolaños, and Sarah Costa. Now let me announce our recipients for 2023. In the category of residents, neighborhoods, and community groups, the winner is Jerry Braxmeyer, nominated by Vicky Moore Olson. Jerry founded the Heart of JB Organization in 2017 to help underprivileged and at high-risk youth. Since its formation, Heart of JB has donated over 1,700 bikes to Elk Grove organizations and families, including the Elk Grove Food Bank, Elk Grove Unified School District, and Chicks in Crisis. Jerry's commitment to creating smiles through new wheels has made a difference for students in the community, and his organization is expanding its services to provide bikes, wheelchairs, and scooters for seniors, veterans, and individuals with disabilities. Jerry exemplifies what it means to be involved with his community and his neighbors. Please join me in recognizing Jerry Braxmeyer.
Mayor Singh Allen, councilmembers. I told myself not to get emotional, but all you guys know me. And I've lived in this community my whole entire life. I have my beautiful mother here. And I was born and raised here, been here 56 years. And I started this little hobby, you know, at first, and most of you guys were a part of it when I started it. And I was thinking, this wasn't gonna be a big deal. I would do this for a couple of years. Well, after about a week of doing this, I had 75 bikes in my garage and in my living room. And then two years later, I became a 501(c)(3). And as you said, actually, we've updated, we've actually donated over 1,800 bikes.
Wow.
And we're continuing to expand that. And this award is not for me. This award is for this community. It's for my family, it's for my friends, and it's for everybody who has donated to me and donated to this charity. Because all this award's going to do is give me more power, more energy, and more desire to make sure every child that I see who's undeserved or underprivileged is gonna be blessed. And I promise you that. So thank you.
Wow.
Appreciate it.
So stay put, we're gonna come down there and present the award. You don't wanna join me? All right.
That's nice. All right, here we go. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Perfect.
Are you sure that's not your sister?
Yeah.
All right, next up is in the category of social and community services. The winner is Imam Mohammed Yassir Khan. He was nominated by Akram Kavol. Imam is the founder and CEO of Al Misbah Food Bank, which serves the community by providing food, shelter, social services, and Islamic education to those in need. The organization focuses on serving the refugee community, but no one is turned away. Al Misbah fills a critical need for services to many families who have been forced from their homes under tragic circumstances and who must create a new life for themselves in the Sacramento region. Please join me in recognizing Imam Mohammed Yassir Khan. Imam, are you here?
Hello, everybody. I want to share a few thoughts, a few words. First of all, this award is a reflection of the mayor and the councilmembers here, that there is an environment where we recognize the good work that takes place in our community. And as the gentleman before mentioned, and he kind of took those words from me, I was gonna share those words myself, is I am here with my friends, my family, and my colleagues from the organization. And if you could quick, please stand up, the Kaval family, my wife, Sister Elena, my brother.
Please come.
So in a good way, the reason why I'm here behind this podium is because of them. It's their support, their love. And I was extremely humbled to be recognized or to be nominated for this award. My older brother, Brother Kaval, thank you so much, you know, for recognizing. And I'm extremely humbled, thank you so much. May we all be used to spread more goodness in the community. May we all be used to unify and never divide. May we all be used to spread more love and to distinguish and to eliminate hatred in any way, shape, or form. Ameen.
Ameen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
If you all want to join, you might. Come on, Sister Elena. We can give the camera to someone. Tamara, would you mind? Or there?
I'll take the photo.
Okay. Monologize it.
Okay, here we go. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Perfect.
Thank you. All right, in the category of arts, culture, and heritage, the winner is Artners, nominated by Sabrina Garcia. The founders of Artners have introduced a series of new and culturally relevant events and programs to the community since their launch in 2019. This organization serves the greater Sacramento This organization serves the greater Sacramento region, but they have special ties to the Elk Grove community. Their Art Grove Event Series has provided new artistic and education celebrations, spotlighting artists like Frida Kahlo and introducing Dia de los Muertos and Dia de las Madres celebrations. Their amazing murals have adorned local events like Cultural Connections and the Multicultural Festival. Their work with the school district is cultivating the next generation of artists through programs and scholarships. And their commitment to community art is making Elk Grove a more beautiful place to live. Please join me in recognizing the members of the Artners organization.
Hello, councilmembers.
Hello.
Thank you all very much for this award and for opening your arms to Artners. I'm so humbled to receive this award. And I want to thank, most of all, all of our volunteers and supporters. And we couldn't do this without all of you. It takes a village. And also Sabrina Garcia, thank you for the nomination. Thank you to all of you.
Marcos?
I mean, I couldn't say it better than what she just said. Just that, again, thank you. We will continue to build in our community, build community through our visual art connections and the power of what visual art can do for our community. Thank you.
Congratulations. All right, there we go.
One, two, three. One more. One, two, three.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. In the category of sports and recreation, the winner is Running for Rett. This was a write-in nomination by the committee members at the Nomination Selection Committee meeting. Running for Rett founded in December 2007 by a grassroots group of family and friends that love Rett Sievers. This organization has inspired thousands of youth and adults in the Sacramento area to get active. Running for Rett, Move Into Life, is in honor of Beth and Randy Siever's son, Rett, who was diagnosed with severe cerebral palsy in 1997 and passed away in 2004. Rett inspired many people with his smile and his will to live, despite his physical challenges. Beth and Randy have dedicated their memory of Rett by utilizing fitness and moving to help others do what Rett wanted to do. Rett's story and this organization is here to inspire and encourage all to move into life. Recognized by their baby-blue running shirts, their energy and presence in the community is infectious. This organization received a unanimous committee vote in support of their vision and work to nurture healthy communities through fitness and nutrition. Please help us recognize Running for Rett. If you can all come forward. If we can get everyone to come forward, that would be great.
Could I just say a couple of words real quick?
Oh, absolutely.
It's great to see you guys, and thank you very much for the honor. And I truly represent, my name's Randy, and I'm Rett's dad. And I truly represent the baby-blue family. We call our baby-blue family. And so ironically, this week is the week that we have our program race that we do. It's called the Run Because You Can. And it's actually held on this Sunday, April 30th. And I left from my house today with, we had a dozen volunteers in my garage, and we were sorting three thousand t-shirts, medals, and shirts, getting ready to hand them out to sixty schools that are participating, twenty-nine of them from the Elk Grove area. And so it's going to be a fun weekend, and there's going to be a lot of kids out running this Sunday in honor of our son.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Can I bring my family up?
All right, here we go.
You guys ready? One, two, three, one more. One, two, three. Stay there for a second.
Bill, can we get a Go Rett? One thing that we do is we do a Go Rett. Let's do it.
It's not too complicated. And it really makes a difference, particularly to the kids.
Yes, it does.
It goes something like this. One, two, three. Go!
All right, so next is in the category of service organizations and groups. The winner is Elk Grove Garden Club, nominated by Mary Adams Wiley. The Elk Grove Garden Club has served the community for more than six decades. The club has fifty-six members who participate in a variety of community beautification projects, programs, classes, and workshops. The group provides a $1,000 scholarship for CRC students majoring in horticulture or environmental studies. And they get their hands dirty with projects that beautify Elk Grove, like the Laguna Town Hall and Littenberger Park Rose Gardens and flower beds at the historic Nicholas Dairy. As they approach their sixty-fifth anniversary this November, please join me in thanking and recognizing the Elk Grove Garden Club. Hello.
Hello. We are so grateful for this award, for the recognition it brings to us with what we've done with fifty-six members. Can you imagine what we could do if we had even more? So, I want to ask you to ask those you know, to suggest to them that they look at our website, see if they'd like to come and try a meeting and help us do more in the future. Most of our members are retired, so we're especially looking for people who are stay-at-home moms and stay-at-home dads. When we meet and the things that we do are while everybody else is in school. So, that would be perfect. Now, I'd like to introduce, I'm the president of the club. This is the vice president, Susan Buckey, who's also a master gardener. And here is Scott, Scott Nicholas, who is the treasurer. Very important position. So, would the rest of you come up for the photo, please? I think we have about a dozen people here.
All right.
And afterwards, what we're going to do is we're going out for pizza.
Congratulations. Thank you. There we go. Oh, no, because now we can.
Okay, here we go. Ready? One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Stay there, please.
Thank you. Congratulations. All right, in the category of Young Volunteer of the Year, we have two winners. Brooklyn Cambridge, nominated by Marie Giacchino, and Kimberly Muesling, nominated by Shandon Hoffmeyer. Brooklyn Cambridge, at the age of ten, Brooklyn joined her mother and her sister volunteering at the Elk Grove Food Bank. Brooklyn has consistently volunteered at the food bank weekly for nearly three years. Brooklyn will turn thirteen next month and shows no signs of slowing down in her commitment to serve those in need. Please join me in recognizing Brooklyn Cambridge.
Hello, everyone. I'm so grateful to be here and really honored to accept this award. I love service. I love serving at our food bank. And I've served there, like you said, every week and almost every week for almost three years. And when I first started, I was almost ten. And I started a little fundraiser to earn a little money for the food bank. I think I raised about $20 to give to the food bank. And then I heard that you could volunteer there, and I was so excited. And as soon as I turned ten, I submitted to be a volunteer, and I've loved it ever since. And I hope I can keep serving for a long time, so, thank you.
Wow. She's almost thirteen. How many of us at thirteen were doing any of this? I'm just so proud of you, and I know the future is bright when we have young people like you who step up and serve at such a young age. So honored that you're here with us.
Thank you so much.
We'll join you down there for the presentation.
You are a superstar.
Superstar. Marie, come join us. She's probably going to say, oh, is she coming?
Okay, here we go. Ready? One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Hang on, we got a couple shots back here.
All right. Our final presentation is for Kimberly Muesling. Valentine's Day is Kimberly's favorite holiday. Kimberly began spreading love to local seniors for Valentine's Day four years ago. As a freshman at Elk Grove High School, Kimberly created, collected, and distributed over one thousand Valentines across Elk Grove this year in an operation called Send Love to Seniors. She created many of the cards herself, but also created opportunities for friends and family, local elementary school classes, and her church's ministry groups to participate. Kimberly celebrated Valentine's Day at three Elk Grove nursing homes this year. When she's not preparing for her next Valentine's Day operation, she is active in FFA leadership and the Thundering Herd soccer team, all while maintaining straight A's in school. Please join me in recognizing Kimberly Muesling.
Oh, hello. Thank you. I am so honored to be selected as one of the Youth Volunteers of the Year. I, I, sorry. I would just like to thank you so much for selecting me to receive this award. And I hope that I can continue to serve our Elk Grove community and make an impact on the lives of others in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. What a tremendous, what a tremendous effort that you do. We need more love and kindness in the world, and you're spreading it right here in our city. Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations. I want to thank again Jerry Braxmeyer, Imam Mohammed Yassir Khan, Artners Running for Rett, Elk Grove Garden Club, and Brooklyn, and Brooklyn Cambridge and Kimberly Muesling for the significant impact on the quality of life you're making in our city. If you know someone you'd like to nominate next year, please visit the city's website for more information and complete the form online at elkgrovecity.org/award. We are now moving on to our next item, our new hire introductions.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. Jason Barham, City Manager. It's always our privilege to be able to introduce you to some of our new employees as well as recognize those individuals in our city who are being promoted or who have been promoted over the last quarter. So, we're going to go ahead and start with our police department with Chief Davis.
Thank you, sir. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council, thank you for having us here. My name is Bobby Davis. I'm chief of police for the city of Elk Grove, and I am here to introduce our new employees for this quarter. I'd be remiss at first by not acknowledging Gabby Lang for putting this together as its Administrative Professionals Week and Day. And this document doesn't happen without her, so I want to make sure and get that in there. First, we have, and I get to read a little bio, so we have a few people in line, so get comfortable. Erica Gary. And Erica was born in Davis, California. He obtained his bachelor's degree from Sacramento State University. Prior to joining the Elk Grove PD, Erica actually worked for the Woodland Police Department and was the Officer of the Year in the city of Woodland. And we have him here now working for the city of Elk Grove. So, congratulations. Dispatcher Casey Hassan, I don't believe she is here. So Casey was born in Oakland, California. She obtained her bachelor's degree in child development from CSUS. Part of joining the Elk Grove Police Department, Casey worked for San Leandro Police Department for four years. Kyle Dickerson, Officer. Kyle was born in Sacramento, raised in Oakland for most of his childhood. He attended Humphreys University in Stockton. Part of joining Elk Grove PD, Kyle worked for the Pittsburgh Police Department for six years and they did not want to lose him to us and he is a valued treasure. We appreciate you, brother. Yes, they tried to keep him. Animal Care Specialist Lisa Marie Siminski. Lisa Marie was born in San Luis Obispo, California and graduated from Franklin High School here in Elk Grove. Prior to joining Elk Grove Police Department, she worked for the Sacramento SPCA for almost four years. Welcome and thank you. Dispatch Supervisor Sean Lieber. And a Godsend to our organization. We have needed another supervisor in dispatch for a very long time, so we're very fortunate we were able to get him. Sean was born and raised, born here, born in Boston and moved to Monterey County during middle school. He earned his bachelor's degree from Kansas State. Sean has worked in the public safety sector since 1998. He worked in dispatch centers for CHP, Gilroy Police Department, Mountain View Police Department, and the Santa Monica Office of Emergency Management. Welcome. Kyle Hughes.
Hey, Kyle.
Kyle was born and raised in Santa Cruz, California. He earned his bachelor's degree in Business Administration from CSUS. And prior to joining Elk Grove Police Department, Kyle worked for the Sacramento County Sheriff's Office where we stole him. My alma mater, so congratulations and welcome. All of his buddies who are still in the jail are really jealous. Katrina. Officer Katrina Silva. Katrina was born and raised in Castro Valley, California. She earned a bachelor's degree in Animal Science from UC Davis. Part of joining the Elk Grove Police Department, Katrina worked for the Santa Barbara PD for two years and Los Gatos, Los Gatos Police Department for the last eight years. And another opportunity for us to hire someone with significant skill set in our profession. They did not want to lose her and we were fortunate enough to get her, so welcome. Animal Care Assistant David Berdugo. David was born and raised in Sacramento. Prior to joining Elk Grove PD, he worked in animal shelter for nearly 10 years, specifically working and learning about huskies. Welcome. Thank you. Community Services Officer Dilpreet Burke.
Hi.
How are you? Dilpreet was born and raised in Sacramento. She attended Sheldon High School. Prior to joining, prior to joining the Elk Grove Police Department, Dilpreet worked for Sacramento PD for four years. And we now have you and you're not going back. Animal Care Assistant Alina Redkin. How are you?
Good.
Alina is originally from Ukraine. While in Ukraine, she worked as a news editor. Prior to joining the Elk Grove Police Department, Alina worked as a au pair. What is that?
Au pair.
Au pair?
It's like a nanny in the family.
Oh, a nanny, right, okay. Nanny in Chicago. Au pair. Excellent. Well, welcome and thank you.
Thank you.
I've never had an au pair. Okay. Dispatch Taylor Courtneyer. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, good, good. Taylor, oops, sorry, already, yes, Taylor. Taylor was born and raised here in Elk Grove where she attended Elk Grove High School. Part of joining Elk Grove Police Department, she managed a tow truck company out of Galt where she oversaw three tow yards. Welcome.
Thank you.
Community Service Officer Ahmad Dawad. Good. Ahmad was born and raised in Sacramento and the Elk Grove region where he attended Elk Grove High School. Part of joining Elk Grove PD, he worked for Sutter Health for about three years and at Metro T-Mobile for approximately 10 years. And welcome aboard. We appreciate it. We have about seven more pages, but we're almost there. Community Services Officer Jose Lucerto. How's it going, brother? How are you? Jose was born in Los Angeles and was, and was raised in Sacramento. He attended El Camino High School. Go Eagles! I'm an Eagle graduate myself, so yes, sir. Good, good things happen when you graduate from El Camino. And is currently earning his degree in business at American River College. I went there too. Prior to joining Elk Grove, Jose worked at a hardware store for two years. Welcome aboard. Ready to train. Come on up. Sergeant Brian Welshons. Say a ton of stuff about Brian, but Brian is a consummate Elk Grove person. He believes in our community. He believes in what we do. We promoted him to Sergeant this last year and he has done nothing but lead the way. And so proud of you, Brian. Welcome and congratulations to your new rank. Dan Emerson. I don't need to read this either. Another one. Dan has been here from the beginning. Started with SSD, Brian did too, but has led the way throughout his entire career. Very pivotal and not just a role in K9 for our organization and investigations everywhere that he's gone. And now as a supervisor, he leads the way. He's been on critical events and you can be rest assured that your officers that are working the streets under this watch are gonna do, be professional and take care of the people that we work with. So thank you and congratulations, brother. Ms. Hanaya Hunt is not here, but I will read Ms. Hanaya Hunt. Property and Evidence Technician, Hanaya Hunt was promoted in January. Hanaya joined EGPD or Elk Grove Police Department on October 30th, 2016. Part of her new assignment will be training new property and evidence technicians. And sorry that she's not here, but congratulations to Hanaya. Customer Service Specialist Michael McClanahan. Welcome. Good to see you again. Michael joined Elk Grove Police Department on May 23rd, 2021. Prior to his promotion, he served as an Animal Care Assistant at the Animal Shelter. And everybody knows how important our animal shelter staff is. One more person is part of that staff and we really appreciate the things you do, so thank you so much. I should make you wait. So, Real Time Information Specialist Kristen Callahan. And she was promoted on March 12th, 2023. But truth is, she's been with our organization since she's come here and she worked in, in Human Resources and has been pivotal in the last year. And just a quick example, we've done over 150 background investigations. That doesn't happen without Kristen in the seat and our Human Resources for the City of Elk Grove. That is unbelievable work. She has built a relationship and bonds with us the moment she walked in and that's what's helped us get over the hump this last year. So thank you so much and congratulations. And now, now, she's on the other side. She's on our side and you can't have her back. Matthew Wells. Matthew joined Elk Grove Police Department on May 29th, 2022 as a police recruit. He graduated the academy on March 9th and is currently in the field training program. Great story with him because he had gotten into the academy, gotten hurt, came back to work and, and was persistent. And as a part of him not just finishing the academy and getting hired on, how much have you lost?
I've lost 55 pounds.
You lost 55 pounds in that process and has stuck with it. So proud of you and congratulations and look forward to good things. Community Services Officer Shannon Gallagher. Hi. Shannon was born in Sacramento and raised in Galt, California. She is currently in the process of completing her Associate's Degree in Sacramento City College. Prior to promoting, Shannon worked as a community service attendant at D-56. And now we have her and she's not going back, so welcome. That's all I have. Okay. A couple of things I did just want to say though to our Human Resources staff, thank you. It doesn't happen without HR, without Miriam, Angie, Kristen, and it just doesn't happen without you. We don't have what we have here without the support that you've given us and it, it has made a difference. With about 50 hirings this last year, we brought our vacancy rate significantly down and that's in great deal with HR, so thank you so very much. And welcome to all of our new hires. And they're all outside, so thank you.
Next, we'll have Cara make an introduction in City Manager's office.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Cara Reddick, Deputy City Manager. Tonight I have Jordan Solario here with me. She's a new Community Events Specialist. So lifelong Elk Grove resident, Jordan lives in Old Town with her daughter and husband. Jordan came to the city with a background in event coordination and marketing and is leading the charge with the new city event series, Fridays in the Grove, which you'll learn more about tonight. One of the things that has kept Jordan in Elk Grove is seeing the growth of her city. The excitement and change is something her family values and she's thrilled to now be a part of that momentum, bringing events with value to her hometown. So welcome, Jordan.
Next, we have Development Service Director Darren Wilson.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'd like to introduce Hyman Ote Ashenafi. Hyman Ote was hired, came as part of our family on January 17th, 2023 of this year as an administrative analyst for our Housing Department and Development Services. It's a much-needed position, as you know, with Sarah Bontrager leading the charge there. She was born in Ethiopia, grew up in the San Jose and Elk Grove areas. She was the first in her family to attend college. So, and she earned a degree in International Studies with a specialization in Political Science at UC San Diego. She was an active member while she was a student of the International Studies Student Association. She was awarded a Member of the Year in 2018 of that association in recognition of her efforts for equity and inclusion and her research on behavioral health resources for the unhoused. That research was published in the 2018 UC Center Sacramento Undergraduate Research Highlights. In the past, she's worked for the San Diego Housing Commission and PATH, which is a nonprofit dedic, nonprofit dedicated to ending homelessness. She's excited to have the opportunity to further her professional career while giving her community, back to her community in an equitable and sustainable manner. In her spare time, she likes to spend time with her dogs, find new hobbies, volunteer and practice mindful yoga. So please welcome Hyman Ote to the Elk Grove family.
All right, next we have our Public Works Director Jeff Warner.
Good evening, everyone. It's my pleasure to introduce the new hires for Public Works. First up is Salvador Martinez, Assistant Engineer in our Traffic Division. Sal is an Elk Grove resident since 2008. He attended Carroll Elementary, Toby Johnson Middle School, and Franklin High School. He earned his bachelor's in Civil Engineering from Sacramento State University. Stingers up. He enjoys being physically active and regularly spending time playing sports at Elk Grove's parks. And his favorite sport is baseball and his favorite team is the now Las Vegas Athletics. Congratulations, Sal. Pleasure to have you. Next up is Abra Ratanasame. He's an engineering technician in our Traffic Division as well. Abra was also born and raised in Sacramento. He's currently interested in learning the inner workings of our traffic group, which is music to my ears, desperately needed and appreciated. He previously worked in the telecommunications industry for seven years, dealing with fiber optic to-home designs for cities and counties. Another tremendous asset to the team here and the city as a whole. He's a big fan of tennis and his favorite players are Federer and Nadal, big surprise. And he's looking for a challenge, so if anyone wants to play against Abra, let him know. Welcome, Abra. Arturo Ariaga is a Public Works Inspector in our Engineering Services Division. He began working as a field technician with the City of Elk Grove's Public Works Department in 2016 as a contract employee. In 2020, he transitioned to our Engineering Services Division as a, again, as a Public Works Inspector, enforcing storm water pollution prevention plans at various public and private development sites. Earlier this year, he did become a city, city employee. He holds many certifications in the field, including Certified Inspector of Sediment and Erosion Control and a qualified sweepie practitioner. And he enjoys the ocean, anything outdoors. And the thing he enjoys the most is live music and concerts. Welcome, Art. Pleasure to have you. Absolutely. Next up is Surab Bharamand. He's an Assistant Engineer in our Drainage Division, Drainage Section. He was born and raised in Sacramento. He went to kindergarten in Australia where he has family. That's an interesting fact about him. He also has his Bachelor in Civil Engineering from Sacramento State University, which he obtained in 2021. During his final year at Sac State, he completed an internship here again as a, as a consultant, contract employee, and ultimately, you know, gained employee, employment with the city. In his free time, Surab enjoys spending time with his family and friends and going to the gym to stay active. Welcome, Surab. Next, we have Kim Marlin, Administrative Assistant for our Engineering Groups. Kim recently joined the city as a permanent employee after serving with us as a contractor for four years. She grew up in Santa Rosa and has been an Elk Grove resident since 2001. She has a son who is currently serving in the US Air Force and a daughter who's a senior at Elk Grove High School, as well as two dogs. In her spare time, she enjoys spending time with her family and friends, watching and attending sporting events. She likes the Niners and the Giants. Yeah, she loves camping, hiking, anything outdoors, plays co-ed softball. And she's excited to be here and is looking forward to opportunities for growth at the city. Kim, welcome. Next, we have our promotions. First up is Civic Zhang. He's an Associate Civil Engineer with our Operations and Maintenance Division. Civic started as an intern with the city in 2017, also as a contract employee. He worked his way up to Engineering Technician and he was recently promoted to Associate Civil Engineer. He holds his Bachelor in Science Civil Engineering from California Davis. He recently earned his Professional Engineering License, which made him eligible for this promotion. His experience includes managing the city's annual Trails Maintenance Program and Annual Crack Seal Program. He is also an integral part in our pavement management program, as well as our sidewalk maintenance program. He has a great smile and an extremely positive attitude, which is, you're gonna see with our next employee as well. Civic. And last, we have Frank Zhang. He's our new Street Light and Traffic Signal Supervisor with our Operations and Maintenance Division. He's also been with Public Works since around 2018 where he again started as an intern and a contract employee. He rose to the level of Engineering Technician and was recently promoted to this current position, Street Light and Traffic Signal Supervisor. He has his Electrical Engineering Degree from Sac State and has his certification as an engineer in training. He is very motivated to strive and will do great in the supervisor role. And again, a wonderful smile, positive attitude. Him and Civic are not brothers, but they're very similar in, in the way they, they perform well with our city and we're very happy to, and fortunate to have them both. Congratulations. And then lastly, I just want to say, a theme with, with all of these employees is that they were once contract staff with our city and through your support and trust, which we appreciate very much, we were able to bring those positions in-house. The training and the investment that we've made in these employees, it, it is, there's, there's no words that can describe it. It can't be overstated how important that is. So these, these folks have been with us for a while and we're very happy to be able to bring them on as city employees, so thank you.
Next, we have Finance Director Matt Pollan.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Last, but certainly not least, I would like to tell you about Cara Taylor Seaman and her promotion to Finance Manager. Cara graduated with a BS degree in Education with a focus on math from Western Oregon University. She went on to work in the pension industry as a consultant to private companies for several years, focusing on compliance, disclosure, and employee outreach for small and medium-sized private employers. And also during that time, as if she didn't have enough to do, she also got her Master's Business with a focus on finance at Portland State University. She transitioned to local government and our family here at Elk Grove in 2016 and she's been working here since that time. In that capacity, she has worked as a finance analyst primarily in the area of administration and compliance of special tax districts and development impact fee programs, as well as the issuance and administration of the city's debt. So she's played a really integral role. And all those items that always come, her and Renee, to you every meeting and you have to read 12 different items on, on the agenda. But that's really playing an integral part in how the city is growing and growing and for us and finance in a fiscally sustainable way, really, really crucial. So in her new role as a finance manager, Cara manages a team of finance analysts, as well as our cashiering department and accounts receivable departments. And Cara and her family have lived in Elk Grove since 2004. So please join me in congratulating Cara.
Next, I'm gonna call up our Economic Development Director Darrell Doan. I believe Luis is not here, but I think he still wants to say a few nice words about his recent promotion.
Thank you very much. Daryl Doan, Economic Development Director. I'm here to tell you about Luis Aguilar, who you all know. We promoted Luis in January of this year to the position of Economic Development Manager. He's not here tonight because he's at a conference on business incubation, so he's going to be bringing back some more knowledge to help run our startup program. Luis has been with the city since 2017. He was born in Mexico and immigrated to the U.S. when he was eight. He was raised in South Sacramento. He attended Valley High. He has a BS from the University of San Francisco in Business Administration. I met him when he was working at the East Bay Economic Development Alliance when I was at Alameda. And so since 2017, he has been in the role of Economic Development Specialist, but now he is our Economic Development Manager. He is halfway through a master's degree in public administration from Golden Gate University. He lives in Elk Grove with his wife Jenny, son Gabe, who is a friend of my son, and their daughter Zoe, and I just, I love Luis so much. He's so critical to what I'm doing and has great leadership potential, and I think he's going to be at City Hall for a long time. So, all about Luis. Thank you.
I just want to say a few more things. One, just to recognize, I'm sure the council recognized the immense talent that you have that we've been able to bring in, the team that we're in the process of forming. Couldn't do without our HR department, and hopefully also recognize the diversity of the staff that's being brought in here. We're really proud of those individuals. I also want to call up Tamara Clark. I think she's here. There she is.
We were wondering what happened.
Didn't forget, always, you know, you got to leave the best for last, right? So Tamara, you guys have all met Tamara, so this is an opportunity for the rest of the audience to be introduced to Tamara. We're really happy to have her. She's Senior Administrative Assistant in City Manager's Office, Assistant to the City Council, does all kinds of things, helped us put together our Mayor's Volunteer Awards, which you saw tonight. Tamara comes with 25 years of experience, mostly in the commercial real estate field, doing both administrative and management functions. Grew up and lived for a long time in the Bay Area, moved away to Arizona with her husband, and then moved back here because she has kids and grandkids and friends in the Sacramento region, so we're super happy to have her. She also has a master's degree in Human Resources Management, so a very talented individual. We're lucky to have her part of the team. So please join me congratulating and welcoming her.
Yeah, I will echo what you were saying, you know, just seeing the new hires and starting to see a trend of great employees that actually do look like our community. It's always been a great ask of our City Council is to have a workforce that looks like Elk Grove, and it's been quite remarkable to see the diversity in the hires. So congratulations to everyone, not only the new hires, to all of the new hires that aren't familiar with our city. We welcome you to Elk Grove. We are excited to work with you. We are a city welcome to all. So thank you for being a part of this journey with us, and a congratulations to all of those that got great promotions, well deserved. All right, with that, we will move on to our next item, and that is our public comment. And we have several signed up to speak, and as a reminder, each speaker has three minutes. First is Chauncey Pennell, followed by Phyllis Marshall. You may come up.
Hello, Mayor, City Council Members. I emailed you earlier about the shooting in Fenega Court. I'm still curious why the detectives and the police department have not even gone and get the evidence video footage from Laguna Quail Drive. It's been days now. I mean, I have here the detective texting me, asking him for more evidence. Why am I doing the work? And then from the lady who told me the evidence, she brought the drugs into the police station, left them here after waiting an hour and a half for police to help her. It's on the table. I have the pictures and everything. Is the police department detectives or anything? What is going on? We let the drug dealer go?
So this is public comment, so I, you know, it's not on the agenda, but I will have our police chief connect with you.
You had a lieutenant connect with me.
Well, he's here.
It's not done anything.
He can connect with you and provide any additional support.
I mean, maybe the media needs to know about it. I mean, Elk Grove Police Department's not helping me or the family at all.
All right. Thank you for your comments, sir. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Chief Davis, I don't know if you want to follow up with him. Thank you. Next up is Phyllis Marshall, followed by Shanae Buffington. Hello.
Good evening, Mayor, seeing members of the council. My name is Phyllis Marshall, and I've been a resident of Elk Grove for nearly 30 years. My daughters were raised in Elk Grove. They went to public school, to Folks Ranch, Toby Johnson, Franklin High School, and Elk Grove has served my family very well. My twin daughters ended up getting scholarships at Columbia University, and one of them graduating with a PhD from Princeton University. It has been a very inclusive community, but probably less than two weeks ago, as I was traveling down Elk Grove Boulevard, I noticed a big billboard that said, "Civil War Days in Elk Grove." I had to do a double take and actually had to do a U-turn because I said I probably saw something that said "Civil Rights Day" in Elk Grove. But no, I was right. It said "Civil War Days in Elk Grove." As an African-American woman who is a descendant of slaves, slavery having occurred here in the United States for over 400 years, with more than 15 million children, women, and men subjected to one of the worst atrocities in the world, you know, for me to, in 2023, to drive down Elk Grove Boulevard on my way to get my favorite sandwich at Le Boue and to see that we were hosting a Civil War Day in Elk Grove in California was disturbing to me. African-Americans are subject to all types of trauma, and when I passed that sign that day, all I can think of was Elk Grove is somehow involved in glorifying the Civil War and the Confederacy. It saddened my heart to see this. I did some research, and I certainly found out that the City of Elk Grove has put in place ordinances with regard to the discharge of firearms and noise, and that there was a similar event that was attempted to be hosted in 2018 at Elk Grove Park that had to be canceled. So I certainly appreciate the work of this council in making sure that those types of events don't occur, given the fact that we have experienced high incidents of gun violence, not only in the United States, but even here in California and in this community. You know, I am going to continue to pursue this issue with the Board of Supervisors and with the state of California, because I think that it is ill-advised for events to be able to take place on private property, to advertise to the community, to invite children to participate in those events where guns will be fired, cannons will be shot off, totally disregarding the sensitivities of particularly individuals such as myself, African-Americans, who know that these types of celebrations are celebrating the Confederacy. You know, racial tension is at an all-time high in the United States, and it saddens me that in the City of Elk Grove, this wonderful city, that we are going to be hosting an event like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am, and then, and just, you know, for those paying, I usually don't deliberate or offer comments during public comment, but I do want to remind those that are attending, at least on this subject. This event is in the county. It is not in the City of Elk Grove, and the sign is on private property, not on city property. So I did look into that as you had requested, and I share a lot of the sentiments that you shared. So I appreciate you coming. But for the record, I just want members of the public to know, it is not in the City of Elk Grove. So we have Shanae Buffington, followed by Heather Vargas.
Good evening, council members. My name is Shanae Buffington. I'm the 47th president of the California Association of Black Lawyers, an association that represents 6,000 African-American attorneys, judges, law professors, and students. CABLE was organized in 1977 to address issues facing black lawyers and judges, and one of our objectives is to vigorously defend black people from those who would consciously or otherwise, consciously or otherwise, unconsciously deny us basic human and legal rights. Since CABLE's inception, we have been instrumental in increasing the number of African-American judges throughout California, and we meet annually with state legislators to advocate for social justice reforms that impact persons of color in the African-American community. CABLE strongly opposes the reenactment of Civil War Days. It seeps of racial divisiveness. The Civil War era taking place 1861 through 1865, as you know, was a horrific time for African-Americans in this country. There was slavery, brutal beatings, lynchings, racial strife, separation based on the notion that blacks were inferior property and unequal to persons of other races. Continuing an error that has left an indelible mark on our history in this country counters unity, harmony, inclusiveness, equity, and equality that civil rights leaders such as the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. and many more civil rights activists fought hard for. Today, we call for restoration of civility, acceptance, progress, and embracing others from different ethnic, racial, and socioeconomic backgrounds. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Heather Vargas, followed by Aliyan Murphy Hassan, and I apologize if I'm saying it wrong.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Heather Vargas. I'm a resident of Elk Grove. I'm here to speak in opposition also to the event of the Civil War Days in Elk Grove. I live close to Mahon Ranch, which is the private property in which this event is being held. It is, so for some statistical historical information about Elk Grove, which you should all be familiar with as we serve the city, is that we are one of the most diverse cities in the United States, let alone in California. Some of the statistics are, we are rounded up, 41% white, 29.5% Asian, and 11% black. And I happen to be very proud that I'm actually the only white person on my immediate street of my block. I have a diverse community of people that I interact with, that my children grow up and play with, and I'm very proud of that fact, and that's why I've chosen to raise my family in Elk Grove. The Civil War event is, the only and sole purpose for any Civil War celebration is to create hostility and racial divide. They will tell you it is for educational purposes, and if that were true, then persons of color, especially black people, would be involved in the content to teach and train and educate around the history surrounding the Civil War, and we are still struggling as a community, as a nation, as an entire union of a system of oppression that holds people of color, especially black people, to a totally different standard, and to drive down the street, and I have blended children in my family, and to see the signs. And I do want to acknowledge, Mayor, that you said that some of them are on private property. There are many of them on public land. I passed two of them tonight on the way to this meeting, so they are all over the City of Elk Grove. I have been told that this council has been told of our concerns and some members of the community, and that there's technically nothing that can be done because it's a private property in Sacramento County. An imaginary line cannot be the reason we ignore the facts and feelings and the stoking of racism that's happening with this event. The city is listed in the event name. Our city is used as the address. The signs are posted throughout the city, and at a minimum, City Council needs to demand that the Elk Grove name be stricken from this event and not used in any way. Secondarily, no money should be given to any organization like the Historical Elk Grove Society that is cosponsoring this, and you should vocally use your influence with the Sacramento County to get this event canceled. The cosponsor, one of the other cosponsors of the event is Native Sons of the Golden West, which is an organization that was founded in 1875 to restore the history of California pre-Gold Rush. That history is about white people history, has nothing to do with indigenous people whose land was stolen, let alone the term "Native Sons" in itself is insulting because it insinuates it's around indigenous people, and it is about old white men. That's who runs the Native Sons. They have a history, which is easily found on Google, of actively against Japanese descent people trying to get their votes removed, having them put in internment camps. And the last thing I'd like to say, if I have 10 more seconds, please. I've never been to one of these meetings, and I have had the privilege and honor as a person to travel across this country. I have been to Dachau, Auschwitz.
Ma'am, to be fair, your time is up.
I understand, but no one in those countries celebrates the Holocaust. It is an absolute embarrassment if you allow this to happen.
So again, if you have the addresses of those that you say are in the city, please share them with us so we can have code enforcement look at it, as we have with the other sign, to determine that it was on private property. So if you can provide those locations, we would appreciate it. And then as a reminder, the City of Elk Grove is not a sponsor or has participated or providing any funding. Yes, ma'am. Thank you. And I'm sure you'll correct me on the spelling or pronunciation.
You pretty much pronounced it okay. My name is Aliyan Murphy Hassan. I'm the former first VP and lifetime member of the Greater Sacramento NAACP. President Betty Williams sends her greetings and regrets that she's unable to be here tonight. On May 6th and 7th, the Elk Grove Historical Society, the Linda Mahon Foundation, the Mahon Ranch, and the Native Sons of the Golden West are sponsoring the Civil War Enactment Day here in the greater Elk Grove region. The NAACP Executive Board and its members, many of whom live in Elk Grove, including myself, since 1991, are concerned about the safety, noise abatement, and policing involved with hosting events like of this kind, events that feature guns and cannon fire, instead of highlighting lessons learned from such conflict. We are requesting, out of abundance of caution, that this board uses its considerable influence with the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors to do what you did in 2018, and that is to cancel this event of 2023. Traffic and noise will, can disrupt the hundreds of families, businesses, recreational facilities, religious organizations, hospitals in the area will definitely be negatively impacted. Disruption of peaceful living, working, praying, and playing will have to be endured for two days. I reiterate our concerns, traffic, noise abatement, and policing. Please understand that we are in support of preserving history because the past, from the past, we learn best practices for the future, but this is not the way to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Dr. Martha Burnett Collins, followed by Fahiza Alim.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Martha Burnett Collins, and I live in 95624, where the Civil War Days are supposed to have their reenactment. I am against this reenactment. The Civil War was a divisive and terrible time for the country, especially African-Americans. The premise of the war was to keep African-Americans as slaves so the slave owners could continue to get free labor per the South, and to free them and to count every African-American as a complete person, not three-fifths of a person per the North. There was a lot of bloodshed, however, on April 9th, 1865, righteousness and morality won. The slaves were freed. We commemorate this freedom on June 19th, which is now a federal holiday. Elk Grove, Sacramento County should not relive this treacherous times. This is a white stain on the country. If you have to reenact a time in America's history, let's reenact the Civil Rights Days, where people took to the streets to fight for social justice. Let's reenact women's suffrage, when women got the right to vote per the 19th Amendment. Let's reenact the day African Americans got the right to vote per the 15th Amendment, and let's reenact Brown versus the Board of Education, when the Supreme Court ruled this racial segregation in public schools was unconstitutional. Let's reenact July 10th, 2015, when the Confederate flag was taken down from the state capitol in South Carolina, and finally, let's celebrate July 1st, 2000, when the City of Elk Grove became a city, and it woke up and hired the first mayor, woman of color mayor. Let's move forward, Madam Mayor, not backwards. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up is Fahiza Alim, followed by Alana Matthews.
Good evening. Thank you for the privilege of speaking before you. Let me read what I have. My name is Fahiza Alim. I'm a former Sacramento Bee reporter. I'm a former Sacramento Bee reporter for twenty-seven years, former staffer at the legislature, and just recently retired after fifteen years as executive staff for the California Civil Rights Department. I'm here as a concerned citizen. I'm here, as the email said, to promote peace and not division. I want to echo the email's words: we need to unite. The Civil War was divisive. It divided our country and our people. As the Union fought the Confederates to free the slaves and unite our country, there's no glory in we live in violence and bloodshed that pit- pitted brother against brother. Our country is currently experiencing an epidemic of violence, gun violence. Why would we promote it? Why would we encourage it? You don't see us raising the Union Jack because England lost. The Civil War, the Confederates lost. Let it die. These Civil War days are not benign. These enactments are a reoccurring cancer. As Frederick Douglass said, "The price of freedom is eternal vigilance." Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Alana Matthews, uh, currently is our final speaker.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening, and I'm reminded of how I stood before the council and with the city of Elk Grove in two thousand and seventeen to lead the Racial Reconciliation Town Hall, where we launched our campaign and declared that Elk Grove is no place for hate. I again stood with, at the request of Mayor Bobby Singh and in collaboration with Council Member Rob Brewer, then CSD Director, to lead a racial healing circle, when in two thousand and twenty-one, we saw increased violence and hate against our Asian-American brothers and sisters. And I stand here again tonight to stand against hate, because in twenty seventeen, it was sparked by the racial epithets and threats that an African-American salon owner had received. And I want to say that hate not only shows up in racial slurs, threats, harassment, it also shows up masked under the disguise of a historical event that is only celebrating one of the most horrific institutions, and that is the institution of slavery. The vile and deadly consequence of over four hundred years is indeed a stain on our country and is a reminder of the legacy of hate that continues. Now, I understand that I believe this event is not taking place in the city of Elk Grove, but I would ask that you, as the leaders, stand and make a statement that we are still no place for hate within our city limits, within our city departments, within our city dollars that will support such an event, and if it is any signs, sorry, I was driving on a freeway, but I heard a little bit, that are on public property, but even if it's not within the complete jurisdiction, your leadership and your solidarity certainly is. So when you hear the concerns and the voices of the community, we ask that you will stand with us again to say, even in this instance, Elk Grove is no place for hate. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Matthews. That is our final speaker. You know, I was going to share some of my comments for the very end, because this is non-agendized, but in respect of those that are here, um, I stand in solidarity with you. I stand with you, because I know. But in this opportunity, we have an opportunity to have those conversations like we had in our heal- healing circle, because in, one of the most important steps is to talk to each other. And so I want to reach out to the organizers and facilitate a conversation of why, so that both sides have an understanding. But I understand the pain and suffering, and I stand with all of you. Thank you. All right, so I think that is our final speaker. So I will go ahead and close our public comment opportunity and turn it over to our city manager.
Good evening again, Madam Mayor, Members of the City Council, Jason Bearman. City manager, several items happening, uh, this week and following to report on. First of all, we already did the proclamation for Arbor Day. As a reminder, there is a tree planting going on, um, this Friday. Um, we certainly encourage people to come out and help with the volunteers that are going to be planting. Um, to date, there have been over thirteen hundred new trees planted in Elk Grove, uh, since two thousand and twenty. Uh, Youth Commission is accepting applications for the twenty twenty-three Scholarship Awards through Monday, May first. Four scholarships valued at both five hundred dollars and a thousand dollars will be awarded in three categories: merit-based, outstanding achievement, and exceptional youth. Students must live and attend, or attend in Elk Grove High School. Visit the city's Youth Commission webpage for details. Big Day of Giving is coming up. Over the past year, the city's provided funding and services to over thirty-nine, or for thirty-nine local nonprofit organizations valued at more than one point four million dollars. The work of those organizations is amplified further through personal contributions. May fourth is the annual Big Day of Giving, a day when personal contributions, um, to participate in the local nonprofits are matched by the Sacramento Region Community Foundation. You can view and support Elk Grove's participating nonprofits on Big Day of Giving by visiting bigdayofgiving.org. The Strategic Planning and Innovation Office is currently recruiting residents and business owners to participate in a new climate ambassador program. These are compensated positions for those interested in issues centered around climate change, environmental justice, equity, renewable energy, clean transportation, water conservation, and recycling and waste. Climate ambassadors will communicate with organizations, groups, and individuals, and Elk Grove can be a healthier, more sustainable, and resilient city. For more details, visit the city's website. Uh, we're excited to have the, uh, our own Elk Grove Aquatic Center, District Fifty-Six, host of California, the CIF Sacramento San Joaquin Section Swim Championships, May third through fifth. The event features the trials and finals for the region's top high school athletes, and is expected to track over twelve hundred attendees, including coaches, staff, volunteers, and swimmers. Meet times are daily from six thirty AM to three thirty at District Fifty-Six. We're excited to have the, our outdoor markets return next week. Seasons, seasonal open-air markets return. The Neighbor Good Market at District Fifty-Six will run every Thursday from five to eight PM, and Old Town Elk Grove Farmer's Market will be back at the Old Town Plaza every Sunday from nine AM to one PM. Please stop by to shop local, support microbusinesses, and connect with the community. And finally, this is a reminder, the city is asking residents to submit their suggestions and their preferred locations for new community EV charging sites through an online survey that will close on Monday, May fifteenth. Details are available on the city's website. And that concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions that council might have.
Thank you, Sheriff, for your report. Any questions or comments from colleagues? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to our next item. Thank you. Next is our consent calendar items. I would like to open up the public comment opportunity. Uh, I don't see anyone signed up for consent items, so I'll close the public comment opportunity and look for a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Move consent. Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much. Moving on to our next item.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Members of the City Council, Joseph Dagman, Associate Planner and Development Services. The item before you this evening is the Pleasant Grove Estates Project. This project consists of a rezone of approximately thirty-one point four gross acres from the agricultural residential five-acre minimum to the agricultural residential two-acre minimum, a tentative subdivision map and design review for subdivision layout to subdivide the existing parcel into fourteen single-family parcels of at least two gross acres in size, one detention basin parcel, and a remainder lot, as well as a tree removal permit. No cons- no home construction is proposed at this time, but, uh, any future home construction would be subject to the city's climate action plan. The project site is located at one oh one five zero Pleasant Grove School Road, on the south side of Pleasant Grove School Road, approximately twenty-five hundred feet east of Beta Road, within the Elk Grove Rural Area Community Plan. The project site is currently developed with three single-family residences and accessory structures that are proposed to remain as part of the future remainder parcel. Surrounding the project to the north, the south, and the west are rural residential land uses, while to the east is the Pleasant Grove Elementary School and the Pleasant Grove Cemetery. As you'll see on the, uh, exhibit on the right side, there's a mixture of, of zoning districts of AR five and AR two out in the, uh, the rural area of the city. Here is, uh, just a couple photos of the site and the surrounding areas. Figure one is the subject property containing three residences that are proposed to remain. Figure two are, is the subject, portion of the subject property that's currently undeveloped. Uh, figure three is the residential property directly to the west of this subject property. Four and five are the Pleasant Grove Elementary School and the Pleasant Grove Cemetery, which share common property lines to the east. And finally, figure number six is the res- the residential property directly north of the subject property on the north side of Pleasant Grove School Road. This project was heard by the Planning Commission at its March second Planning Commission meeting by a vote of three to one, with Commissioner Fernandez voting no and Commissioner Poole being absent. The Planning Commission recommended that the city council approve the rezone, approve the tentative subdivision map, and approve the tree removal permit. Comments and concerns that, uh, by the commission and members of the public during that meeting were, uh, surrounding density and consistency with the general plan, the drainage, the design of the wall and fence around the perimeter of the subdivision, the traffic as, and the tree removal permit. The project had to go back to Planning Commission on April sixth, as the design review for subdivision layout entitlement was inadvertently omitted from the staff report and the resolution. Per the municipal code, a subdivision design review is required for any tentative subdivision map. Uh, during that meeting, with a, out of, with a vote of four to zero, with Commissioner Singa being absent, the Planning Commission recommended approval to the city council approving the design review for subdivision layout. And the comments and concerns by the Planning Commission and members of the public during that meeting were density and general plan consistency, as well as the drainage. Before you is the rezone exhibit. As part of this project, the property applicant proposes to rezone the property from AR five to AR two. Currently, the pro- uh, subject property has a general plan designation of rural residential. The approved zoning districts in the rural residential are the AR ten, the AR five, which is, the property is currently zoned, and the AR two, which is what the property proposes to rezone to. So the rezone is consistent with general plan policy RA dash one dash two, which is retaining the rural area land use designation of the general plan. The rezone is also consistent with general plan policy RA dash one dash five, which, uh, supports the continuation of land uses unique to the rural area, including horticulture, keeping of large animals, and other uses that support ongoing agricultural and conservation activities. Uh, we also have a, the city also has a right-to-farm ordinance, which allows for, uh, agricultural activities out in the rural area, uh, continue out in the rural area. The table on the right side of the screen are the agricultural uses that are, um, defined here in the city of Elk Grove. You'll see that, uh, the zoning designation of AR five, which is currently zoned, and the zoning designation of AR two, the agricultural uses are consistent, um, whether they're permitted by right or permitted through a conditionally used permit. Uh, rezoning to an AR two will, uh, still allow for agricultural activities. This is the tentative subdivision map and design review for subdivision layout. Uh, as I mentioned earlier, the project proposes to create fourteen new single-family lots of two gross acres in size, one detention basin parcel, and one, uh, remainder parcel. The project will be a gated community with access off of Pleasant Grove School Road through a twenty-two-foot-wide private road. Each lot will have a twenty-five-foot-wide roadside ditch for stormwater retention and treatment, which will drain into the future detention basin. Uh, staff has determined that the project is consistent with the general plan, specifically general plan policies RA dash one dash one, which requires new residential lots to be, uh, no less than two acre, two gross acres in size, and, uh, policy RA da- da- uh, dash two dash five, which requires two gross acres for, uh, private water and septic systems in order to minimize the potential groundwater contamination. An easement over the proposed private road will be dedicated for dry utility services and emergency services as required by the city and the Consumer's Fire Department. There is also a condition of approval added, uh, to the project requiring the applicant to establish a homeowners association, which would be responsible for the maintenance of the common areas, including but not limited to the private detention basin, the existing drainage system, the roadways, and the dry utilities. Uh, as part of this project, there is one tree of local importance, uh, proposed for removal, that would be, uh, tree number thirty-nine oh five, uh, which is in the, uh, circled in red. The applicant, uh, the applicant's arborist report, uh, rates this tree as, as a two, uh, with the characteristics of major structure or health, uh, problems. Uh, the tree is located under an existing, uh, power line, which has been topped, uh, multiple times to maintain clearance. The applicant is proposing, uh, the private, uh, the private road at this location. We, we found it to be the feasible location on the frontage of the project, as a result in the preservation of all tree, all other trees on site. Any other location on the private road along Pleasant Grove School Road would conflict with existing overhead power lines or require multiple trees to be removed. Uh, we have received a number of public comments, um, that were, uh, during the Planning Commission review, as well as written comments, that were circulated to the members of the, uh, to the mayor and the council prior to tonight's meeting, and I can go through those now. The main comment that we saw in many of these written, uh, letters was about the drainage. Uh, there was a drainage study submitted as part of the application submittal reviewed by the Engineering Department and found to be consistent with the city's drainage standards. We do understand that there are, um, there are, uh, continued drainage concerns, so we do have the applicant's engineer, as well as, uh, city staff engineer, to address any, uh, any concerns during the public comment period. Uh, there was also a question as to whether the existing onsite drainage ditches along the easterly and westerly property boundaries were to remain or be removed. The applicant has confirmed that the existing onsite drainage ditches on the easterly and westerly, uh, property boundaries are to remain. And then there was, uh, one comment about, uh, who's going to be responsible for, responsible for maintaining the existing, uh, the proposed detention basin. Um, as I mentioned earlier, there is a condition requiring the HWA to, to maintain all and proposed onsite, uh, drainage facilities, including the detention basin. The second comment, uh, that we received are, is regarding the density and the consistency with the general plan. Um, as I've outlined, the project is consistent with the rural road, uh, the rural residential designation of the general plan, general polit- general plan policies for the rural area, uh, the rural road improvement standards, and the Elk Grove Municipal Code. Uh, we, during Planning Commission, we did get some questions as to what the design of the exterior, um, of the subdivision would look like. We are proposing a condition of approval that would require fencing along the Pleasant Grove School frontage and the perimeter of the subdivision to be constructed of open-view Uh, we did have some comments about traffic. The applicant did submit a vehicle, truck, vehicle miles travel analysis. Uh, in that analysis, the project, it was determined that the project will not exceed the VMT limits for the rural residential land use designation, nor will it exceed the citywide limits. Another comment we received was regarding air quality. While no home construction is proposed at this time, any future home construction will be subject to the city's climate action plan. And then finally, uh, regarding the tree removal permit, um, staff and the applicant agree that the proposed location of the private road is most feasible along the, the frontage on, of the project site, and results in the preservation of all other trees on site. Any other location would conflict with existing overhead power lines or would impact other No further environmental reviews required pursuant to State Secret Guide line, section one five one eight three, the project is consistent with the, uh, with the general plan environmental impact report. So tonight, uh, staff is recommending the city council approve the project. So tonight, staff is recommending the City Council approve the project. This concludes my presentation. Staff and the applicant are available to answer any questions. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your presentation. At this time, I will declare that the public hearing is open and invite the applicant to speak, if you wish.
Hello and thank you for your time. Appreciate you guys' service to the community. My name is Eric Nuttall and I'm the representative of the applicant. I think Joseph did a great job and we've welcomed the work with the Planning Commission and the Planning Department throughout this process. They've been very good to work with. As Joseph mentioned, this creates 14 new residences for the city. A city that's trying to grow and continue to increase. Properties like this, as similar to other projects in the area, create quite a bit of value for the neighborhood. They beautify the area. They bring a lot of trees and a lot of growth and a lot of beauty to, to the residences around us. So we're excited to be part of something like this. Our project, as Joseph also mentioned, asks for zero exceptions. We're not looking for any exceptions at all. Everything that we've designed, we specifically and with great intent, designed it to comply with all the regulations for the, not just the city, but for their rural area regulations. And as mentioned, the HOA will maintain the street, gate, frontage landscaping, and the drainage basins as well, which I know is a concern of some of the people. Throughout this, you're going to hear concerns from some of our neighbors, and I want to address some of those just up front here. As mentioned, we did perform a, if I can go to the, how do I go to the next?
There's a keyboard that slides out of the photo. There you go.
Yeah, I got it. Thank you. A VMT state was completed. Some of the concerns that, that I've heard is regarding the school drop-off, kindergarten pickup, and regular school pickup of Pleasant Grove Elementary School. I'm familiar with this as my kids attend that same school. So, well, we're well aware of what this does. I think it's important to note, the location of our project is one of the only locations where kids could actually walk to school. So the odds of us contributing to the traffic going to or from school is very negligible. I've drawn lines of the likely path of travel for cars leaving to and from to go to work or community events. Are they going to go down Pleasant Grove Elementary School? Presumably. North or south on Bader or down Grantline Road. I know Mackey Road is a, is a very tight road. That's the travel that we take to get to school, myself. I don't, I don't see this development impacting Mackey Road. I don't see this development impacting the school drop-off and pickup. A note mentioned by one of our developers or one of our partners in this group is that a lot of these kids that attend Pleasant Grove Elementary School come from outside of the school area. They come in from different areas, and that's where you get a lot of the traffic. With limited seats in the school, having 14 new homes that might add more kids locally that actually fit in the school district will also have less people from out of the district attending the school and therefore potentially less traffic on Pleasant Grove School Road. So I don't feel that this, this concern is impacted by our development. Another argument you'll hear about is this tree. This is a picture of the tree. The reason the arborist has called it a level two, among other things, is the topping of the tree for the, the smud power lines. I don't see that existing condition changing anytime soon as I don't believe smud will, will do underground power lines in this development. As is required, we will have three new trees planted in our frontage area. And that's not including the amount of trees, and we might do more. That has yet to be submitted, but a minimum of three new trees as a replacement for this tree. And then you have 14 new lots, which, if you drive through any rural neighborhood, most lots have dozens of trees on them. So we're losing one to gain many, many, many trees in, in the proposal of this development. It seems clear to me that, that losing one to gain many makes a lot of sense. I am for trees. I love the thought of having trees. And my guess is this development over time will have hundreds of trees. So I think we're, it's a win for the community in terms of trees. Drainage. Again, a lot of people are concerned about the drainage with understanding of that. This has been thoroughly looked at by our civil engineer and by the city staff. As you are probably aware, all developments are required to have less water flowing from them than the existing condition. This has been designed to that standard and to exceed that. I don't know what more to say on that in that is, other than it's been reviewed at length throughout this process and continues to, to be approved and pushed through by everybody involved. One of the comments I, I read is concern about the swales and the basin. Again, that will be developed, or maintained by the HOA. Another concern that's brought up that is a concern of, of our development as well is the downstream path. As it leaves our detention basin, it appears that there's maybe blockage that blocks it from going into the tributary. We support our neighbors in finding a resolution to this. I think that's something that Public Works would be good to look into to make sure that there's not a concern. Prior to this development, it sounded like there's been flooding there. So that would be a concern for sure, and we support that being looked into. Last but not least, there's a concern of people that this is not rural enough. This is, I'm not a PowerPoint professional, so I apologize for this, but the red dots that you see there represent the 80-plus homes in this area that are under two acres. At least 30 to 40 of these are under one and a half acres. So to say that we are different than the rest of the community, I feel like we are very much in line with the rest of the community with this development. The Shires has a couple of them, which is a recent development. Over off of Corfu, which is where I reside, JTS did a development in 2000, early 2000s. Those are gross two-acre parcels. Nobody drives down that street and thinks, man, this is tight. I know people with horses there. I know people with pigs there. I know people with chickens there, roosters. It feels great. It's beautiful. They have beautiful trees. They're beautiful homes. Everywhere you drive, just looking at this map, right there off Just Amir Lane, those are one-acre properties. Oak Ranch and Pineacre Court, all less than two-acre properties for the most part with very few exceptions. Right there off of Bader and Sheldon Road. It's not uncommon to see a property under two acres in this area. Again, we're not looking for any exceptions in this. We're following the rules. I'd hate to be made an exception because we're not looking for an exception. I feel like we should be given the same rights as other developers, other people in the area. I don't feel like we should have any special standards given to us. So we look forward to your support. I'm open for any questions for us, and I have my engineer here as well if you have any questions for us.
All right. Thank you, sir. Um, at this time, I will open up the public.
I have a question for the.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Eric, thank you for your presentation. I just have a question regarding, and I'm glad you, you covered the drainage issue, and I'll be looking for comments from staff on that later. But as, as far as the HOA is concerned, and you mentioned maintenance of the swales and detention basin, which is great. But how about just the overall look and feel of, of the community like other HOAs in our city, in more dense neighborhoods? Do, will you add that element of responsibility to that HOA as well?
Yeah. We, we like to keep it light. And the, the feel of rural is, is to let a lot of the owners do, you know, be rural. But we will have minimum square footage. We will have other things like that to help with the consistency of the other, you know, some neighborhoods similar to this.
Yeah, and, and what I'm getting at is, you know, oftentimes we've seen in the rural area, because there's so much land, sometimes the owners aren't able to take care of it. And so you see a lot of overgrown brush. You see, I'll call it, personal items that are stacked up in there, which in turn creates more responsibility or onus on our own code enforcement. So I'm glad to see that your, an HOA would be in place, and I would just want to make sure that you'd be able to add that element of responsibility to that HOA.
Yeah, that's a great comment. We'll definitely do that.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Sure. Thank you. At this time, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public comment opportunity. And let's see, we have a number of speakers. So as a reminder, we have three minutes per speaker. First up is Lynn Jackson, followed by Dale Imperato.
Good evening. My name is Lynn Jackson and I live on Bond Road. The back of my property is going to be very adversely affected by the drainage that comes out of this subdivision. Elk Grove does not seem to have a policy in place where when you develop here and you have a drainage issue here, you, you solve it there, but it doesn't pay any attention to other people that are downstream. And there's a number of us that are going to be affected. But when Elk Grove was planning the rural Elk Grove policies and requirements, the designation of at least two-acre parcels was put in place. Unfortunately, with these new developments that have been, i.e. the Shires, which is next to me, and the current proposal, the acreage sizes end up being less than two acres. You have enormous houses, 5,000 to 10,000 square feet. It takes up the whole acreage. I don't know where you're going to put a horse on something like that. I'll tell you that right now. I mean, my neighbors say, oh, we can have a horse, and I'm going, where? You've got a tennis court, 10,000-square-foot house, a swimming pool, and a basketball court. Where's the horse going to go? But this current proposed development's plot state that they are two-acre parcels. I understand they say they're gross, but in actuality, by the time you take away the swale, the street, and all the other easements, the actual parcel sizes are approximately 1.4 to 1.6 acre. And you're going to put septics and wells on that. We would like to see the city go back and honor the original intent when we worked on developing the rural designations. I worked on that with a number of the people in the audience. The original policies for rural Elk, rural Elk Grove were developed with intense input from the residents. As a city, we are rapidly losing our original intent to respect the agricultural history of this area and supplanting that intent to one of a suburban bedroom community to the city of Sacramento. The City Council has the ability to go back and take a look at the original intent and to do something about it. A caveat on the drainage, it is imperative that the city puts in place something that protects people downstream from developments. And because of that, and because that has not been done here, I do not believe that SEQA guidelines have been met. Because that is one of the issues that SEQA addresses. I worked with one of the attorneys that helped to write SEQA. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up is Lynn Jackson, no, that was Lynn, sorry. Dale Imperato, followed by Carolyn Sores. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Dale Imperato. I live on Bond Road. And my property, the northeast meets the southwest of the proposed property, and that's right where the water, the, the holding reservoir is going to be put. And that area, I've lived out there for 30 years. That area, when they were irrigating that property, the 31 acres, that area was never, ever dry. It was always mud. I mean, thick mud, because it, it's, it's, it's clay and it just turns into mud. The cattle used to gather around there and stand in the mud when it was 100 degrees so that their feet would cool off and, and they would get cool. This last winter, my, my back pastures were completely underwater, four to six inches water the whole time. There's a drainage ditch that goes back behind the property that is completely filled in with bushes and trees and old broken fences and barbed wire. And I've seen gates put across it to keep horses contained. So it's not functional. It's supposed to drain off. It's supposed to go over to Laguna Creek. It's, it needs to be dug out and it needs to be, you know, the, the, you know, dug out so that the water runs in a certain direction. And it has not been cleaned out since Elk Grove became a city. And so there, there, there is an answer there for the, for where the water's going to go. Also, the basin is only two feet. That's going to fill up. And you give that two, two summers, it's not, it's going to be solid fuck, cattails. And they say that the HOA is going to take care of it, but if they don't, what, what leverage do we have? I mean, I would like to see that become part of conditions of approval, that they maintain that, because we have no leverage whatsoever if they don't. That's going to fill in with debris and weeds and branches and leaves very soon. It's not, it's just not deep enough. It's not enough to hold that water. If that area is already wet, when they just irrigate once and the whole 38 acres is, is pervious and it becomes impervious when they build their houses and swimming pools and, and all that, that water has to go somewhere. It is already going in that direction. I think my property will flood even worse than it's flooding now. And the second point I want to make is the size, and I agree with, with Lynn Jackson, that 1.4 acres is, it's not, it's not rural. It's not going to attract people that are rural that want to have animals. And if you have people that, I mean, have big homes and four-car garages and swimming pools and tennis courts and driveways, they're not going to have space for animals, and they don't understand living next to animals. They don't understand that you can't have fireworks and rockets. And Lynn has had her neighbors shoot off a rocket and land in the pasture with the horses. They don't understand living next to horses and livestock.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Carolyn Sores, followed by Rick Sores.
And Mrs. Sores offered some digital images to accompany her comments, which we'll pull up, and those were submitted within 24 hours of the meeting.
Hi, Mayor Bobby, and City Council. And our house is on two and a half acres, and we barely have enough room on our land for agricultural use. It's been a few years since we've used our back acre, back acre for a few cattle, sheep, and escape, or, or goats. But we do have the ability to use that space for ag, and so will future owners of our lot. Our lot is a full acre larger than the proposed lots you're considering tonight. We're on a net two, two and a half acres. The lots that are proposed are on one, net 1.4 to 1.6 net acres. That land variance is the difference between a house on a large lot and a house with the ability for agricultural uses. While the proposed development may be beautiful, it is not ag and it is not rural Elk Grove as promised by our city to our residents and future generations in Elk Grove's general plan. On the screen? Oh, no, the one before that. Sorry. These are the three houses that are currently on the, on the site. They're going to be reduced to 1.4 acre lot. Just these three houses on 1.4 acres, they will not have room for ag. So next one. This picture is a recent development in Elk Grove, north of Sheldon on DeSane and Penta. They don't have the look or feel of rural Elk Grove. The street design that you see here with the little circle and the, the big drainage, that is pretty much what's proposed for next to us. It doesn't have the look or the feel of rural Elk Grove. This does show that we do have traffic on Elk Grove Boulevard. I mean, on Pleasant Grove School Road. This, the bottom picture is of the, the oak tree that they're planning to remove. The developers are saying that there's no possible place for the entrance to the property. I didn't do a very good graphics, but you'll see on the far left, there's a, where the heritage oak is going to be removed. But to the right of that, there's an 81-foot, 81-foot clearance that does not have a tree or a power pole that needs, that would, could, that needs to be removed. And to the right of that is a 99-foot clearance and then a 86-foot clearance. None of those would need a power pole or a. There are no trees or power poles in those huge areas. Okay, next one. Oh, that was it. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up is Rick Sores, followed by Tamara Fitzpatrick.
First of all, you guys should be exhausted after cap to cap.
We are. I lost my voice.
I stayed home, so I'm here all night. Then I'll talk slower. You know, it's been fascinating that over the years, we knew that eventually the family that owned all the acreage out there next to us would eventually have homes on it. And so we weren't surprised when a product came forward that said, "This is what we're going to do." The issues we have, I mean, we're out there, we've got large oak trees, we've got small local roadways. The roadways, by the way, we can't get out of our road when school's backed up. Because number one, all of the cars are SUVs or trucks. They may give us a little area to get out. I've got a low-slung car. There's no way I'm pulling out there to make a left without getting killed by a car that way. So I see a problem there, and I'm hoping the school district will actually take some responsibility and reroute things, whether they use some of the land next to the cemetery to do that, because right now, it's very inefficient. And Rod, thank you for coming out the other day, because I think it's important to see how it is, and I think you've got a good feel for that. Some of the places, Lynn and some others, have tons of flooding going on. And I'm concerned about the fact that when the city of Sacramento, or county, went ahead and put in some drainage vaults on Ranchview Court, I don't know if they are actually functioning at all. And that could be why the water's backing up and hitting three or four different areas there. I'd recommend, and I heard a number of new engineers being hired by the city, that some of those people would go out, meet with Sacramento County, look at the way things were laid out on Ranchview Court, and as a result of that, determine, can we clean something up so that people don't have almost an entire year of water on their back fence, which creates issues with mosquitoes, animals running up and going into soggy ground and things like that? So that concerns me a lot right there. There's something else I wanted to do. Those are the basic issues. So, thank you for your time. We appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your service, former council member Rick Sores.
My pleasure.
Former mayor.
Former mayor, yeah.
I miss cap to cap quite a bit, though. I hope it was productive.
It was, thank you.
Let's see. Next up is Tamara Fitzpatrick, followed by Kenneth Fitzpatrick.
Mayor, Council, thank you for allowing me to speak. I reside at 9081 Ranchview Court. We will be one of the most impacted parcels by this development. Now, as ex-mayor Sores had said before, we fully expected it to be developed back there, but what needs to happen is some significant, and I mean significant, investigation and redoing of drainage. All of that drainage along there has been, was put in for farming. It has not been updated. It is, as Dale said, is full of overgrowth. We've asked to have it taken care of. They told us, "Nobody takes care of it. We would have to take care of it." We have significant flooding, as it was in this last, we've lived there almost 30 years. September, it'll be 30 years. We have seen much of the parcel flood. The drainage ditch is full. And we had a 40-foot tree fall over just this last time because it's all clay. There's no real drainage there. And I noticed on here from Carolyn Sores's notes that this is supposed to drain north into Ranchview Court. I don't know where they think this is going to drain, because it comes between the parcels into the court. Supposedly, it's supposed to go up the west side and out to the creek. It never flows on the west side of Ranchview Court, because the road cants to the east. It cants to the east side. So all of that water comes onto our property. It floods our driveway, and yet the ditches are dry on the other side. And what ex-mayor Sores said, that there should have been some drainage vaults on Ranchview Court? Haven't heard hide nor hair of that, never seen any kind of drainage done. So as this development stands today, it needs to stop until there is commitment from the developer, from the city, or the county to do significant drainage mitigation in that area. Because you cannot put a subdivision back there with it already flooding significantly and expect it not to wipe us out on Ranchview Court. We've been there 30 years. We do not deserve to have a new subdivision flood us out. And so I ask the council, the city manager, and everybody else to review this even further and do much, much deeper investigation into this drainage of us down road, especially for us, because we are going to be one of the number-one impacted parcels.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up is Kenneth Fitzpatrick, followed by Raul Martinez.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's a pleasure to speak with you tonight. I support all the statements that have been made already regarding the drainage. I go out in the back part of my property, and I've worn boots that are over two feet high, and I can't go to the back because there's so much water, it would flood my boots. I don't think you realize how much water is actually back there. That property right now is completely undeveloped, and it has a pretty good drainage on the hill. But when, like they mentioned, when they irrigated it, I would back in the middle of July and I'd have this much water at the back of my property. That's before you go back and pave the road, put in huge houses, and then you increase the runoff even more than what we already have. This issue is not being adequately addressed. And I've, we've lived out there for 30 years, like my wife said. I've seen the county come out one time, they took a crew and cut the cattails. They have not been back one time since then. That drainage ditch does not flow. Our driveway coming into Ranchview, we were considering actually evacuating because there was so much water out on Ranchview Court. And then the parcel between, just two parcels to the north of us, there's a huge waterfall running across the road about this deep at the last rainfall. There's about 800,000 gallons per inch of rainfall. So we're looking at, to get two inches of rain, like we've been getting recently, 1.2, 1.6 million gallons of water, where's that water going to go? Now, they say they've developed a retention basin, but those require a lot of maintenance, and they're expensive. It's going to be expensive to maintain that, and I don't think that's being adequately addressed at all. I think the city's just kind of turning a blind eye to it. It looks like a project that kind of complies with the requirements, and it looks like, "Oh yeah, we'll just rubber stamp this one and send it through." But you're not addressing adequately the drainage issue at all. It's just not being done. The other thing is the traffic on Pleasant Grove School Road. It is so bad in the morning that I will not even go out that way by the school, because it's backed all the way up from the school all the way to Ranchview Court. That's a quarter mile. I walk that all the time with my dog. So the only way you can get through there is to go around down the left side of the road into oncoming traffic to try to get around to go out to Grantline Road. Now, you're going to put the entrance to this subdivision right in the middle of that traffic stream. Where are those people? You're talking about being sideswiped by the traffic. I pity the poor person trying to come out of the subdivision, because they're going to be hit by somebody coming the other way. The only reason why you can get out now is because you can see down the left side of the cars and get around the line of traffic. You go down there right now, all the neighbors have signs, put up, "No turnaround on this driveway because of the traffic because of the school." Okay? It's a big issue. It really needs to be addressed. So I ask you, as a person who lives there like for 30 years, we've maintained the property, we've asked repeatedly for that drainage ditch to be maintained, it just falls on deaf ears. It's the county, it's like, "Oh, it's some drainage ditch in the south county. Who cares?" Well, now it's the city of Elk Grove's responsibility, and someone needs to own up and do something about it, please. And we would appreciate your support of this. Maybe, the solution might be reducing by one parcel. Maybe don't do 14 parcels, maybe do 13 parcels. Make it a little bit bigger. Make it the full two acres instead of the two gross acres. Thank you very much.
Next up is Raul Martinez, followed by Suzanne Grimstad.
Good evening, and City Council. I want to address the proposed subdivision coming in. It was brought up that it would add to all the beauty for the trees, and the problem being is that with the trees comes houses, and you're going to have all these houses all over the place. I concur with all the points that were brought up earlier with the traffic. And I live on Ranchview Court. I moved in there 12 years ago. I went ahead and had to put in four pumps, water pumps, to drain out my property, because it was standing water only. So every year, we have to get sandbags to help divert the water to the drainage ditch. And that's not good. On the street side, the water, half of the road is covered in water. And the drainage ditch, it's not going anywhere. So you're going to have issues with the drainage of the water if this subdivision is being built. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Suzanne Grimstad, followed by Katie Earl.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. And it's Grimstad, G-L. I probably didn't write it well. I lived at the end of Ranchview Court, and I've been there 38 years. And Elk Grove did maintain the ditch, and it's only been in the last three or four years. I would call up, and they would come out. They didn't always do it on their own. Sometimes I had to call. But they did clean out those ditches, and we did have better drainage. Our house has ditches on three sides, and they maintained them on two. And the one side goes all the way down along all these properties that you're talking about. And it's not being cleaned out anymore. They're cleaning it in all the areas around us, but for some reason, Elk Grove is not keeping our ditches cleaned out anymore. But they did do that. The other thing is, you're going to have an accident on Pleasant Grove School Road, because there is not room for people to park. They take up one whole lane, so people trying to get through on Pleasant Grove have got to go on the wrong side of the road. And I see people doing it all the time. You're going to have accidents there. I don't know why there hasn't been yet. We're a quarter, Pleasant Grove School Road is a quarter of a mile away from the school, and they blocked the end of our street. We can't block it. They park right across the end of our street. You can't even drive out. You should buy that property that this development is proposed for and put parking for the school on it. That would solve that problem. It's really a terrible problem. It was a little, when we moved out there, we've been there 38 years. It was a little country school. There wasn't a parking problem, but it's horrendous now. And you can't, people can't use that street. It's not adequate. It's a two-lane street, and they take up one whole lane. And the drainage is horrible out there, but it was much better when Elk Grove maintained the ditches. So this is going to make the problem a lot worse. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up is Katie Earl, followed by Joe George.
Thank you for your time. We really appreciate it. A lot of the topics that I have mentioned have already been talked about, so I'll talk about some items that have not been mentioned. Specifically, obviously, we'll have to add traffic. I live on Mackey Road between Sheldon and PG Road, Elementary Road. Traffic is a big concern every single day. Speed, 40, 50 miles an hour down the street, even though we have speed bumps. Additional houses, additional people in the neighborhood will bring more traffic. I'm concerned about the wildlife and the environment, the critters, and the impact that this dense development is going to have on the critters. Specifically, I'll mention, we have lots of birds, turkeys, doves, Cooper's hawks, red-tailed hawk, pheasant ducks, geese, turkey vultures, foxes, raccoons, opossum, coyote, snakes, owls, et cetera. All of these little critters in our environment, we enjoy them, some people more than others, but they're part of the environment. And seeing that those possibly being displaced and affected by lights, by just the sprawl, Carolyn had some photographs of what development will probably look like. And lots of lights bring a lot of, it's negative to the rural area and the rural feel. This plan just doesn't look or feel rural at all. It doesn't look like any other parcel in this neighborhood, adjacent or near. We're going to see impact on air pollution, noise, and we'd like to see some studies on traffic and wildlife as well. Probably the biggest thing is the density of the project. It's a lot of houses on a small property. We're not against the development. It's just the extreme high density of it and the effects. I didn't, obviously, I don't, I'm not impacted by a lot of the water, but many of the neighbors are. Most of our neighbors have livestock, orchards, and pastures. If this project goes the way it is, we'll not see any pastures or livestock. That's all I have for now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up is Joe George, followed by John Cox.
Hey, thank you for having me here today to speak to the city council, mayor. And I've been, since 1984, we've been farming and having livestock and cows and stuff. The problem is, when you build a development like that, we move trailers and livestock. We're right across the street. So we don't have, during the school hours, we don't have access to the road, so we can't move livestock. So we have to move livestock at certain times, early in the morning or late at night, because of the traffic. My niece goes to Pleasant Grove School. She's here with me today. There's been some fender benders, like everybody's talking about, right in front of the school, and it's been bad, some bad accidents there, you know? And there's been, like they're saying, you have to use the left lane, and hopefully, nobody's there to go, what about an emergency or a heart attack or something? What are people, the ambulance going to do and stuff like that, you know? Our friend, mayor, ex-mayor here, Rick, had a heart attack or something. The ambulance got to go pick him up. I was there in that incident. So if the street's blocked, how are we going to pick up our sick people with the ambulances and stuff? And another thing is, that parcel is clay. That's why the water isn't going down. So what's going to happen when you build all these 15 or 14 septic tanks, and that water's right there, and it ain't going to go through the clay, because the climate's changing? So it's baking the clay, so the water isn't draining like it's supposed to. And we're going to have 15 more wells? What about the droughts? What's going to happen when we're out of water? So this year's been a good year for water, but in the future, what's going to happen? You know, we're losing water tables here in Elk Grove. So in the future, if we lose water, are you guys going to pump water into that, into, you know, our area and supply water for livestock and, you know, and other facilities around? Or what's going to happen to the future? And then the animals around there, what's going to happen to the animals? There's birds, like, all kinds of birds, all kinds of four-legged animals, and there's all kinds of stuff out there. So what's going to happen to them? And they're going to be scared to the lights, because you've got 15 more houses out there. People are going to be running into animals out there. Sometimes we have deer out there. I've seen them right around Grantline and Bond Road. I've seen them right around Grant Line and Bond Road there. So what's going to happen, the impact on the wildlife? And noise pollution, light pollution, and more cars, and air pollution, and what's going to happen? You know, I don't think this is the right project for that land, so I'm opposing it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next up is John Cox, followed by Maria George.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Not that it changed anything, but I believe the staff member said that the PC had a vote of 4-0. I was here, I believe it was a 3-1 vote. Not that it changes anything, but just for the record. I had a question about the fencing. The gentleman mentioned that they are going to handle the fencing along the roadway. I was curious as to, does that also include fencing along the property lines? I live at 10080, which is the property just to the west of the development. And I'm kind of wondering what kind of fencing will be along my property as well as other properties? Is that going to be a decision made by the individual property owner? Or is that something the developer is going to handle? I wasn't really sure about that. Also, I'm recently in a business where I am retired law enforcement, but I am developing properties myself. So I understand that development is something that takes place. But a property that we, I recently purchased in Sonoma, we've had to do extensive testing for the soil. We've done perk tests. We've had to pay a lot of fees for people to come out, for the city to come out, inspectors to come out and examine the soil to make sure that it's appropriate for septic and well as far as the size of a home. Can it handle that type of a system? So I'm not aware of any of those tests being done in this particular project, but I'm kind of curious, why are we not, that's happening? In reference to the traffic issue, it is pretty serious. As I mentioned, I'm law enforcement, 33 years. I've seen some real close calls out there. And it does get backed up across our property all the way down past Ranch View. And I've seen people pass on the left lane at speeds of 30, 40 miles an hour. I've even seen school buses drive on the wrong side of the road at 30 miles an hour, passing multiple vehicles. So I don't know, I'm not concerned about this adding additional traffic. I am concerned about emergency vehicle access because during, you know, 20 to 30-minute intervals, there is really no way for an emergency vehicle to get to this development due to the school traffic. So if this does go forward, I really would encourage staff to work with the school to develop some type of other arrangement other than them informing people, you know, line up down to Ranch View, because I think there may be other alternatives that might be less hazardous as far as a response there. Let's see. So lastly, as I mentioned, I'm a former police chief. I was an interim city manager. I've been involved with a lot of developments that have gone forward. And I fully believe that the owner of this property should go to develop this land. But I think they need to do it in a responsible way that addresses all the issues. I don't want to see the city rush into this and have regrets, whether it's drainage or traffic or anything else. And so we're not opposed to development. I'm just in favor of very responsible development. So please consider that in your decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Maria George, followed by Randy Becker.
Hello. Thank you for allowing us to speak. Just like the other neighbors have stated, we are not against development. I have lived out in that area, actually, right across the street from where, I'm kind of panicking because it seems like the exit or entrance to the project may be right at our driveway. So I'm wondering now, where's our mailbox going to go? Or where, what, how is this really, really going to impact us? I just think it's too many homes for the area. Like they keep talking about traffic, Pleasant Grove has their, any type of carnival, any type of event. We already deal with them parking in our ditches all the way down to Ranch View, both sides of the road. So if we are opening up a subdivision, that's going to have to be taken into consideration because they do use our ditches and block our driveways. I just think it's just too many homes. And we already have a problem with the water in our area. We already have a little committee going on in the Sheldon area to figure out our water situation. So there's constant meetings, and I'm wondering if there's any studies have been made, or do we have any plans, like my brother stated, for our water? We have already had to lower our well, and we are at bottom. So I know we just had a good rain. It was awesome. It all recharged everything, but eventually, it's going to go back down. So how are we going to sustain? Does Elk Grove have a backup plan, and all of a sudden, we're all going to connect to the city for water? Because you put 15 more straws or 14 more straws in that area, it's going to impact all of us. Some of us on the streets still have actual running, working farms, cows, goats, chickens, horses. So it's not just, you know, a family of four living in a home. We actually have farms, not pretend track homes with pools and the possibility of adding a horse, which I don't think that'll be, nobody is going to put animals there. It's going to be like the project around the corner on Bond and Bader, where it's just monster beautiful homes, but it's not going to actually be ag. So I think we need to seriously look at the impact of the water. Is it going to be safe for the rest of us for septic? When the drainage problems happen, like our neighbors have talked about, you're going to have issues with the dry wells. The dry wells are going to not be able to hold water, like we just had happen out in Wilton, where people were pumping their sewer into their field because they couldn't maintain, the dry wells were full. And so there's a lot of other things we need to look at by putting all of those homes there. Yes, traffic, they put the wonderful speed bumps in front of Pleasant Grove Elementary. I've seen many cars, especially in the evening, right about right now, where the kids like to race down our road and jump those speed bumps. So, and we're crossing to go to the mailbox, and we're dodging cars. There's going to be a lot of impact. We're not against it. I get it. We have to develop and grow. Like the city, I never thought Elk Grove would be a city, and here we are. Thank you for our time.
Thank you. Our final speaker is Randy Becker.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. What a mess. You guys only have one choice, to vote it down. Staff has done a poor job. It's incomplete. The developer has not spelled out what type of homes, what size, how it's going to affect anybody. At this point, you vote to approve it? These people might as well line up for attorneys, because there's going to be a lawsuit against the city. There's going to be a lawsuit against the development. These homeowners deserve what the rural community expected. I was 17 years old when I first moved out here, and Pleasant Grove was my go-to to get from Wilton to Sacramento. And I just took a trip to get away for personal reasons, as some of you guys know, this last weekend, and took a ride, and somehow, I ended up on Pleasant Grove. It's been years since I've been out there. It's ridiculous. It's absolutely ridiculous to think that we're going to decide something so incomplete. Homeowners that buy into development are going to bring dump trucks of dirt, and your water table is going to change. They're going to put wells, 14, 15 wells, siphoning out of the same hole. And these wells are not going to be like we used to have at 75 to 125 foot deep. They're going to be to 300 to 400 feet deep. And in the summertime, people are going to be crying when they have to go to 500 and rake up $5,000 to $10,000 of money they don't have. These people. So we need to take a stop, a pause, and redesign the water issue. We all know what we just went through. That property, all that property out there is not designed for what needs to be done. This is just the first of many that's going to come in front of this body over the years. Now's the time to figure it out. Put your great minds to work. Have them get the water development and the water runoff correctly, and then decide what kind of homes we're going to build there. Rural is not 10,000 square foot homes, nor is it five. Guaranteed. It's more like 2,000 is large. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. And that is our final speaker on this item. So I will go ahead and close the public comment opportunity and invite the applicant back up if you want to provide any additional comments, particularly based on comments you perhaps are, that you heard.
Thank you for the opportunity to respond. As you heard, most of the comments, largely most of the comments, really aren't impacted by our development. The traffic, as I mentioned before, isn't going to impact, be impacted by our development. It's impacted by the current students there. Our students aren't going to impact the traffic there. Will it be a concern for us to get out of our property, like the other neighbors? Possibly. But we're not making the traffic worse at the school drop-off and school pickup. This has been deliberated by the engineers at length. The drainage will not be impacted negatively by our project. Less water will outflow than is currently outflowing from our project. If there, it is true.
Please, we've all had an opportunity to speak, so let's give the same courtesy to our speaker.
We have licensed engineers who hold a responsibility for their projects that have reviewed this. We have a city engineer that has reviewed this. We have huge drainage swells. What's not being taken into effect is all the trees, plants, grass, and other things that will help keep the water on the project as well. So this has been analyzed a lot. So to have a lot of people parade up here and talk about issues that they don't fully understand, and they're not appreciating the amount of work that's been put into it, is frustrating to sit here and listen to.
Okay, again, let's hear from the applicant. Please, let's hear from the applicant. You had an opportunity to speak, sir. Thank you.
And the truth is, the engineers have reviewed this at length. And that's the truth. I don't think it's fair to judge what the 14 new homeowners are going to do to their property, to tell them that they can't have animals there, that that's not realistic. Why is that? There's over 80 properties that are similar or smaller than us. They have animals. They have horses. They have pigs. They have chickens. So why are we saying that they can't have them, that that's not realistic, that's not possible? I'm not going to sit here and tell who the future owners are, what they're going to be able to do with their property. That seems unrealistic to me to put that type of demand on there. And we're talking about 14 homes and treating it like a large development. This isn't 400 homes. This is 14 homes. This is not a big development. So, again, it's tough to listen to some of the comments. They're just not accurate. This has been dug into quite a bit. The outflow, again, we stand with the neighbors with the concerns of the drainage downstream. And we're hoping that that gets taken care of. We're concerned about traffic like anyone else, but we're not adding to the school traffic. We would have welcomed the opportunity to meet with board members or council members out of the property. We reached out. That would have been helpful, I think. And so we would have liked that. I guess that ends my comments, but I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, sir. I will go ahead and declare that this public hearing is now closed and open it up for council deliberations and direction. And since this property, this project...
Mayor, I have a lot of questions, if you don't mind.
Yeah, can we start with...
If you want to do that for comments first? Okay.
Yeah, we're going to start with Councilmember Brewer, since this project would be in your district.
Ground zero in my district. Received an email from Eric Nuttall Monday, April 24th at 10:41 PM, wanting to mute about this project. That's not reaching out. I need to be reached out at least a week, two weeks in advance. Or if the issue is before the planning commission, contact me. Less than 48 hours or 36 hours after or when this project is due, that's not communication. Rick and Carolyn Sores, they reached out to me on Monday, right after the planning commission met. I was able to meet with them on Friday. I was able to meet with their neighbors. I was able to go through the entire neighborhood. I was able to look at the property in question and actually experience the traffic jam at Pleasant Grove Elementary School. And I've seen that traffic jam several times over the last five years, as a CSD director and now as a city council member. Went to the backyard of Dale and Imperato's house with Lynn Jackson and the Sores, looked at that drainage area. It's not a traditional ditch bank that I'm used to seeing, because growing up in the Central Valley in a rural area, I know what a ditch bank looks like. It's deep. You could play Evel Knievel over them. And if you fall, you're going to swim and dive in some cold-ass water. Pardon my language. But that's what a ditch bank looks like. Earlier today, as Mr. Sores mentioned of the rural community and being a cap to cap, I dropped off CSD Director, Board President Gil Albiony, longtime rural resident. And I looked at all of the drainage pathways in front of the houses along Sheldon, and I purposely went back, turned around, went down Bader. And those drainages are deep. And looking at the, but the one thing that really spoke to me the loudest is when I went down Ranch View Court with Carolyn Sores. So those drainage pathways are somewhat narrow, but I see the drainage as it runs from the back of the Sores and Imperato residences and makes their way through Ridgeview, Ranchview Court, all the way out to Bader, leading up to the Laguna Creek Way. I've noticed that the drainage pathways are somewhat narrow, but on the backside of the Sores and Imperato residences, the ditch banks are not traditional ditch banks. They're kind of flat. And then you have one side that is somewhat like an old-fashioned creek, another side where it's somewhat more flattened or leveled up. And that's not, that doesn't suffice. And they gave me the history of this whole, of the whole situation where the county was responsible for those backways. When we became a city, the county basically walked away from that. So debris builds up over time. The land doesn't get fixed or gets addressed. I see these two cement cylinders that look like drainage, that look like drainage ways or wells, but there are no wells in there. But you see carcasses of animals that fall inside them and try to get out. And then I see hot wire running along the properties to prevent a horse from running away or running off or running out into that ditch or drainage spillway, where it's still moist, somewhat swampy, could break their leg. And we know what happens when horses break their legs. We have to euthanize them. So there's a lot of things at question. There's a lot of things at question. And this area where the property is listed is right in the heart of that neighborhood. People have to get in and out, looking at the map. There's only one way in and one way out. One way in and one way out. There's no pathway to lead people, school kids, to Pleasant Grove Park unless you create a pathway to leave from that neighborhood to the park. And in the bigger picture of things, the neighbors that basically came up here and just tore the veil off this, Joe George and Randy Becker, they said, don't even, don't even consider it. They didn't even have to tell me that, just by my seeing-eye test. I looked at the land. I looked at the proximity of the school. I looked at all those areas, and it was like, nice concept, bad fit. You can talk about other neighborhoods that have less density and have smaller houses, but for this proximity where this location is at, this is, you can't say you're putting in a rural-style neighborhood if you don't have right to farm, if you don't have drainage considerations, if we're not honestly looking at the density, if we're not looking at a clear pathway for the young school kids who will go to Pleasant Grove School so no one has to drive out and drive in to pick them up every day and be stuck in that traffic. If we're not looking at a clear pathway for the, for the young school kids who will go to Pleasant Grove School so that it, so no one has to drive out and drive in to pick them up every day and be stuck in that traffic. Because that's a safety hazard. If there's enough problems where the Georges and everyone else, when they go to collect their mail and you have this narrow pathway of a pleasant, a pleasant school road, it's a very narrow two lane pathway and cars do drive fast down there. And that's just, that's just a bad part in itself. And for soil classifications, we got to do a better job in investigating this or at least provide some clarity on what constitutes for clay and what constitutes for soil slash silt. Because everything out there that I ran across was clay. And as a young kid working in fields with my grandfather picking watermelons and herding cattle and hogs, that area is clay. Hard concrete clay, especially if we go into a drought. So I know there's a lot of considerations we want to have for conditions for approval of the basins and drainage and making sure the homeowners association would be responsible for the mitigation of that and looking at the swell and how to deal with the, with the bio drainage basin. But at the end of the day, it's a good concept, bad location. I can't support it.
Next up is council member Darron Soon.
Thank you, mayor. I want to start off with some questions for staff. I'm, I'm hearing some legacy issues here in regards to traffic and regards to drainage. So I'd like to get some, some feedback from staff about the existing traffic conditions. From the drainage side, you know, this has hearkened to the west side of town where we had some drainage designs that were also less than satisfactory. And I know staff did some things to help out with that over there. So I wanted to hear from staff what, what they know about the existing drainage conditions and if there's any global fixes in store.
Yeah, so I'll chime in here first and then rely on some development services support as to the application itself. You know, certainly what we know in this area is there are clay soils out here in Elk Grove in general. There are clay soils which allowed, you know, or prevent drainage from happening much more readily than other soils. The area itself is very, very flat. So these properties are traditionally subject to standing water. You heard some of the folks mention the fact that they've had to install pumps. I, in fact, have installed pumps on my own property here in Elk Grove as a result of the flat conditions and needing to get the water off of the property. Excuse me. As to the downstream drainage ditch, there are several concerns that were heard tonight that certainly would like to investigate further. I would love to meet with these residents and understand these concerns. I did reach out to staff prior to the meeting to really understand the historical information that we have on record. I'm aware, Mrs. Jackson, I've spoken to those folks in that area off of Bond Road several times. There's concerns about drainage. There's concerns with the Shire's developments in that area as well and the drainage contributions. But as far as Laguna Creek Tributary 3, which is what this drainage ditch is, the, in looking at some of the information, some of our easements are inconsistent in the area. So that's one issue that we need to look into further and further address. The concern regarding private improvements that exist within these channels is also a concern, something that we certainly don't want to, you know, incur cost as a result of. We'd love for these folks to, to, you know, take care of that themselves and meet with them to identify what these issues are holistically. You know, what are our issues? What are their issues? And really come to a solution. Recently, we've been working with staff and the Public Works Department to consider our policies regarding rural area ditch maintenance. This isn't the first time we've heard these concerns. And certainly the recent storms have exacerbated the issues and, and kind of brought them back to light, right? I mean, we've had a lot of dry weather recently and so a lot of this isn't front of mind, but of course now it is with the recent storms and the impacts that they've had. So a lot, a lot to look into further here. I think in general, to answer your question more directly, there, there's not a whole lot of historical information as far as we know about currently that I got back from staff. But we are aware in general of, of the challenges associated with drainage in the area and getting drainage away from these residents in general throughout the area.
Just to tease out a little bit more, so I heard you allude to the, more of the ditch maintenance as an issue. And I also heard Mr. Soares comment about some older county facilities that were, that were put in storm drain chambers or underground. Do you have any, any idea about those facilities or?
No, we have no knowledge of any drainage infrastructure, underground pipelines or anything. As far as I know, it's all open channel, surface drainage in the area. Aside from, of course, cross driveway culverts and minor things across roadways. But in general, it's all open channel flow through the area. And, you know, dry wells are of course something that has been explored, but currently not being allowed by the county. They've decommissioned several wells. Some of our wells have been decommissioned as far as dry wells are concerned. So nothing that we're aware of and I'd be surprised to know if there's anything currently functioning out there because we're certainly not maintaining it. So unless it's privately maintained, it wouldn't be something that would be functioning.
Okay. So you, do you have a plan to look into the, the drainage, I mean, excuse me, the, the maintenance of downstream channels at this time or is that something?
In general, we're, we're looking into it as a department, coordinating with our drainage engineering team and our operations and maintenance team to get a better understanding of the concerns broadly, as well as what we need to do to, to continue to address that. Again, the storms have brought this front and center. So, you know, it was a good opportunity for us to, okay, examine our existing policies and the way we maintain these ditches. Again, there are several challenges, right? Flat area. How do you go and dig out these ditches without deepening every channel within the city to get to the Sacramento River, right? You start upstream here in the rural area and ultimately you have to, you have to exit, the water has to exit the city or end up in a basin somewhere that, that is subject to all of the concerns again raised from vector issues to weeds and other abatement. It becomes a cost. So an in-depth analysis and evaluation really needs to be had if that was something that wants to be considered. I think you characterized it very well in stating that these are legacy issues, right? These are issues that have existed in the rural area since the county managed the area and now since incorporation, something that we're certainly well aware of and.
Yeah. Well, and along those lines, I think something like that needs to be done to, to address these, these conditions with changing climate, perhaps greater runoff. If you need to come back and enlarge some of these ditches as a city or as a, you know, as a solution, I think we, we need to know that. I think the residents need to know that because I, I just don't foresee, you know, this, I'll get to the application in a minute, but, but I will say the application is not going to. If this application didn't go forward, the problem that is described today will continue to exist if we don't look into it now. So that global analysis, I think, needs to be done. And the solution that you mentioned, perhaps enlarging some of these ditches or, you know, at least maintaining it, cleaning it out to improve the hydraulics in there. I think, I think that type of analysis needs to be done.
So just, I'm happy you actually raised that issue. One of our budget initiatives for our drainage engineering section this upcoming fiscal year that will be subject to city council approval will include full LiDAR mapping of the entire city, including, that would gather topographic info, much more so than we have currently. And that will allow us to perform such analysis. There's also a proposal in the budget as an initiative to update our storm drain master plan, which hasn't been updated for at least a decade. Not in any substantial or meaningful way. I think we've done some minor updates to, you know, account for new changing state laws, et cetera. But we want, we really want to take a look at this much more in depth and particularly in our rural areas.
Yeah.
And I think, again, I just want to highlight the fact that in general, our storm drain system performs extremely well, right? We don't have a major property damage. These, these concerns that exist in the rural area have been there for a long time. Not to say we don't want to address them certainly, and that's evidenced by the fact that we're, we're putting forward these initiatives somewhat unprompted, but certainly we're aware of these concerns that exist.
Yeah. Good. Thank you. Let's go to traffic. What is going on?
Keep my mic on.
What can we do about the, the traffic that's happening out there? It's obviously the.
I can tell you as a school, former school board member, that's been a problem. And what's ironic is actually trustee Beth Albiony lives on that road as well.
Yeah.
This has been an ongoing challenge and I know that it's something that we should have some coordinated discussions with the school districts in our two by twos because, you know, from time to time, we do hear about that.
So actually it'll be on the agenda for the next meeting. It's certainly something that we're aware of. We have, we have, I'm a resident. My kids go to school in this, in the city. I see it every day, not only through my own personal interactions, but also through the, through the concerns we hear from the community. You know, Mewalk School that just opened had major traffic concerns, as you well know, not only from vehicular traffic, but just pedestrian traffic as well. How do you get kids to and from school from the adjacent neighborhood? And so definitely a concern of ours. Unfortunately, there's not a lot of required interaction or coordination through state law. The schools are, you know, independent development entities. We cannot condition them. We cannot entitle them. That doesn't mean that we cannot coordinate with them for, for addressing these traffic concerns and we certainly want to do that. You know, at the last two by two, we mentioned it, certainly for some new plan areas. And when these new schools come forward, we have got to make sure that they account for the traffic both onsite and offsite.
So let me just be clear. The, the, the traffic is exacerbated by during school pickup and drop off hours, which happens in virtually every Elk Grove school area in the city. I guess what I want to make sure is, absent that, AM PM type, do you, do we have that type of traffic? We do not.
I'm not aware of any concerns outside of the AM PM pickup, drop off times.
School drop off times?
Yeah, outside of that. And certainly we'd love to hear from the community as to otherwise, but I'm not aware of anything outside of those times.
Okay, sir.
Good evening, council member. Thomas Garcia, Veltwin Services Engineer. We did have our traffic engineer look at the impacts of the project. Sequel looks at VMT vehicle miles traveled for the environmental clearance, but for a site specific, we actually looked at the impacts to the project on the roadways. AM peak would add, I believe, 12 vehicles, which is about one every five minutes. PM peak adds 16. So take that as you will. The impacts to the PM peak wouldn't seem to impact the, the school traffic as they're gone. AM peak adding an additional 12 cars or one every five minutes. Again, that's the information we have.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. I intuitively, I would not think there would be, you know, a significant increase in traffic from the project. But I, that's why I'm getting at both the drainage and the traffic sounds like a legacy issue because I'm hearing the residents talk about traffic today, right? Pre-project conditions.
I would be happy to address the drainage as well. So the developer or the development is required to meet pre-development flows for drainage. They can't have any additional water coming off of the site. So that would address the impacts of the project exacerbating the existing condition. The, as far as the maintenance of the basin and maintenance of the drainage facilities overall in the development, as part of the final map process, they're required to have a stormwater treatment agreement with the city, which would address all the maintenance requirements for the individual stormwater improvements in the, in the development.
Yeah, I understand. I got more questions on the, on the project itself, but I'm going to get back. So the, so the, the traffic situation, again, being a legacy issue, it sounds like if, if we're talking about school pickup times, I wholeheartedly concur with the mayor's comments. You know, we need to get together with the school district and coordinate how, what we can do, whether it's traffic control, if we had an officer out there providing some traffic control during that time or, or whatnot. But I think that sounds like a prudent path forward to do that. And then, okay, so now I want to come back to, to the project applicant and Mr. Solwell, I'm sorry, I, make sure I got your name. Mr. Nuttall, sorry. So I, I got to say, I, I was surprised when you said you had reached out also. So I had to look for your email, make sure I didn't miss it. And I saw it came in on, on Monday and you probably were not aware, but a lot of us were back in Washington DC on behalf of the city since Friday and Saturday. We did, we had a 6:00 AM flight from DC and arrived just a few hours ago. So I, I was not aware, but I, I would say encourage you or anybody else, this, this meeting, you, you will know that this is going to be at the next council meeting much earlier than when we find out, which is Friday afternoon with our agenda is. And I would encourage you or anybody else to reach out earlier to, to give a best opportunity to actually have a conversation. Because I, I would have had to have all this, all these questions addressed before this meeting. So, you know, I'm going to, I'm going to ask a lot now. So I appreciate you mentioning that, Thomas, the, our, our drainage, drainage law. And I just want to dig in a little bit deeper. So when you, when, when the applicant, and maybe a question for the applicant's consultant, you know, is too, but when you design this detention basin, is it, is it designed to only contain the flows for pre-existing conditions or are you? Oh, two questions. First, are you make, are you designing the flows, everything on this site to, to go into that detention basin?
The engineer for the developer designs the site. We designs the site and the detention basin. We, we review the plans or the proposal to make sure that the basin is, the drainage report to make sure that the basin decides to accommodate the flows based on the information that they give us.
Yeah. So is perhaps the, is the consultant here? Oh, hi. Can I? I turned my mic off. Could you please state your name and affiliation? I'm sorry?
Brittany Bear.
Hi, Brittany. So with the, your assumptions on the design, so are you designing all the flows to go into that detention basin or some of them going towards the front of the site?
Yeah, so the, every flow from every lot is designed to go from the back of the lot towards the front into the ditches, the roadside ditches, and then eventually make their way into the basin, so.
So it's all contained onsite?
Yeah.
Okay. And then do you assume, what, what area do you assume for pervious or impervious areas of each site?
So we went with the, well, accepted runoff values that are in the drainage manual for the land use type. Also in, when we were evaluating the LID requirements, the city has a minimum or a maximum size that you can choose for single family residential is one acre. So the LID requirements are actually more stringent, you know, considering a higher perviousness per, per square foot of acre, so.
Okay. So you actually assumed a, a one acre pervia, impervious area flowing into?
Values consistent with the one acre, yeah.
Values consistent with the acre, okay. Okay. And then what design flow will that detention basin accommodate?
The, I don't remember offhand, but I know that it takes the entire, does the staff have the, the report?
I don't have the, I don't have the report with me.
I know that we're greatly reducing whatever the, I remember that the existing flows, let's say they're 80 CFS, we're reducing them down to like 40, I think. We're greatly reducing the impact, the net impact on the area.
Okay. And so what I'm, what I'm trying to get at is, and especially given these legacy conditions, and, and maybe this, this is an added condition, but, you know, we, we talked about, yes, the, the, no more than pre-existing condition flows can flow offsite, right? You're not creating more impact than was there before. That's, that's the, that's the purpose of it. However, given, you know, the, what this legacy condition, which we don't know what the solution is, we don't know when we will have a solution, perhaps for this project, it may be prudent to consider ensuring that any, all the runoff will be contained on this site in that detention basin for, you know, 100 year design flow. Or some factor that, that would be, give residents some comfort. And so that's, that's where I'm looking at the two of you.
That is the current, I mean, you can.
That is the standard.
That is the standard, yeah. That's what we're currently meeting.
Okay. And, and then that's right, this, it's two feet deep right now? Is that what that is?
The basin will, the, yeah, so the, the basin and the drainage ditches, hydraulically, they're all a system, right? So it's not an isolated element. So as the drainage, we have hydro modification requirements in this area. And so we're regulating the outfall to a very precise set of standards that are set forth with a computer application that you guys have created. So it's not something that I, you know, have the engineering judgment to perform myself. I use a calculator that's your guys' so. perform myself. I use a calculator, that's your guys' system, so, so I'm complying with the drainage output standards, you know, that are set forth with your guys' systems. That then backs the water up into the basin, which will then back it up into the ditches, and then with regards to time, it's then meant to release at an attenuated rate, but not to the point where it would cause vector issues.
Okay, okay. And then, again, we're, we're talking our design standards, but again, given the legacy issues, is our standards enough at this point?
Yeah, if you're asking me that question, I would say that, that conformance with our standards has served us well thus far, right? Our system performs generally well. I think designing to the hundred-year storm is a pretty standard condition for, for other agencies, and you know, could consider going above that, but certainly would come with its own challenges and costs, for sure.
Okay.
And, and just to be clear, I do have the, the standards here. There, there's one standard that requires no net increase of peak flow, and there's another standard that says that all open-channel drainage systems shall be designed to carry the hundred-year frequency storm with one foot of freeboard. So I'm not, not sure how that applies to the downstream channel in this case. I'm not hearing any conditions associated with that currently, but the, the, the open-channel design for the onsite system should conform to those standards.
Right, so no greater waters leaving the site with the project built than was happening today without the project?
Yes.
Okay, and then in, in terms of the septic and well system, it has its own requirements for the, for the lot sizes, and, and I know there's, there was concerns about the one and a half acre, and I know our standards get to gross acreage, not net acreage, so given that the net acreage is what we heard, one and a half, 1.6, what I want to hear from, and this is more, I'm sorry, Brittany, it's more from, for staff's comments, but in terms of the, the room for septic and well, and as, as you know, septic has its requirements for its spacing of its wells, of its chambers in there.
Do you want to?
So for the, over the course of projects, especially ones like this, that are in the rural area, we rely on Sack County EMD. They're the permitting agency for both wells and septic. If they have specific concerns about the project, whether it's well or septic, they'll provide specific conditions to address that. They did review this project, but did not provide any specific conditions. Therefore, staff's not aware that there's any specific concerns to, to look out for. Based on the two-acre parcel size, I know they're a little bit less than that net, but two acres gross is our standard, and that's based off county standard of two acres gross for parcels on septic and well systems.
So EMD understands the net's less than two acres, yet they have no comments on further, okay, for their review? Okay, well, I mean, I think, I wonder at this level of detail, because this is, this is the, this is what is, is analyzed when a project comes forward, looking at these issues, drainage, traffic, sewer, septic, well. I, I do have a great appreciation, I don't live in the rural area, but I do have a great appreciation for the rural area. I also have appreciation of, of the growing population, the scarcity of land, and just, and our, our, our housing affordability crisis that we continue to be in. And so what's, what's, what's challenging is, here we have a rural area and a, a project within the rural area, and while it may not look like what folks feel like a rural area should look like, it complies with our city's standards and guidelines. It allows people to live in a rural area, albeit not the full two-acre parcel, but something close to that. I could tell you, anybody who lives in a 5,000-square-foot lot or 6,000-square-foot lot to hear a one-and-a-half-acre parcel, I mean, that is, would be huge to, to them. So, in that case, in that sense, it's, it is relative, but we want to be able to also, in my opinion, allow enough peo, or more people to enjoy that, that rural sense of living. And so whether it's seven lots or 14 lots, I mean, I think having that, you know, the seven additional lots, I, I, I don't see it being a huge impact relative to the seven in terms of traffic, in terms of, in terms of drainage. And again, complying with all the business practices for engineering and planning, and our, our current guidelines that we've adopted, it, it's difficult for me to ignore the, the technical analysis that's been done. Now that, again, is aside from the legacy issues to the system, which is, exists before this project has even been proposed, so I do believe we need to do work on that. But for this project alone, you know, I, I, while I, I certainly have great respect for, for Councilman Brewer, but this is a process that, that is done throughout, throughout the city, and it, it's difficult for me to, to reject this project on, on that basis. So with that, I'm gonna, I guess I would either entertain a motion to continue it, but at this point, I, I could also support it at this point. I'll, I'll hold my comments for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Okay. I usually don't talk about history much, because most people don't really care nor pay attention to it, but I'm gonna give a little bit of my history, because some of you may not be aware. My family moved to Elk Grove in 1976, so 47 years ago, if I got my math right. We lived at 9666 Sheldon Road. If you're not familiar with the area, which most of you are, that is the corner of Sheldon and Bradshaw, where the traffic circle is. And while there are two contiguous parcels that my family currently owns, there, the initial land that my parents purchased at, at 9666 Sheldon Road is 1.43 acres. So, growing up, I was in 4H. We had goats, chickens, sheep, pigs, ducks. We had a garden with, with all kinds of vegetables that I hated and my dad loved. And we had, we also had a, an orchard with fruit trees. And every morning, I would ride my bike down Sheldon Road to Bader, to Pleasant Grove School Road, to Pleasant Grove Elementary. You don't put a kid on a bike on any of those roads anymore. So, times have changed, obviously, right? But I say all this because I want you to know that I understand the situation. It doesn't fall on deaf ears. In fact, for many years, my parents were unable to make, or they, during school hours, I think it's Albiony Middle School to the south on, on Bradshaw Road, would back up all the streets, right? So my parents were in exactly the same position that you're talking about. Thankfully, people always made a, a kind of a opening where my parents could make a left-hand turn. The traffic si, signal made it, or the traffic circle made it worse, but that's a conversation for a different day. So anyway, I bring that all up because, again, I hear you. I understand what you're talking about. So I think that you can have a 1.4 acre and still have a rural way of life. I lived it. I grew up in it, right? My concern is relative to the flooding or, or drainage, and I guess without going, and I, I appreciate you very much for going into the depths of the conversation of, of the drainage, because I, I'm sure many of you also remember that we used to not call it winter, we used to call it flooding season, because the rural area flooded. That was just what it was. There was nothing magical about it or horrible about it, it's just, you couldn't get out. But that has become a legacy problem, right? You cannot move on and not have, you know, have some of those things addressed. So I guess where I, I am not mostly opposed to this project, I am concerned about having a solid conversation or a solid resolution to the, the flooding and drainage, mostly because I hear, I hear, when I, when I'm listening, I hear some apprehension, right? Not necessarily entirely about what's going on, on the parcel, but what's going on downstream, and, you know, the, you know, the applicant has said, well, we want to know what's going down, on downstream too. We've said, oh, well, it's a legacy, eh, right? So I, I hear a lot of consternation, a lot of, lot of reservation. That's the word that I'm looking for. So, it, it'll be interesting to hear where, where others want to go. I would be, I would be interested in continuing to, to date certain, if that's, you know, if that can be done, if we can get those answers. But I would, I mean, again, in general, I do hear and understand and trust that our engineers have done their work relative to drainage onsite, so I would, I would like to hear where everyone else is.
All right, thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Robles?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilman Suin, I appreciate the questions that you asked, because this is a lot of technical and a lot of engineering, with your engineering background, certainly definitely helps. Thank you to the, the folks who have come out and advocated on their behalf. Thank you also to the applicant who's also here. This is never, is an easy, an easy decision. It's, it's a pretty tough to, one to make, right? But having it going through the process of the planning commission, and I kind of got a little bit excited, because, you know, I was a former planning commissioner, so I kind of was like, oh, back to planning commission. I understand the, the, the concerns of the community, but also with looking at the current project, it is pretty consistent with what we have in the general plan. I've seen other projects where, and on the planning commission, we denied it, and then they appealed it on the council, and they approved it, right? So it's going through the proper channels. As it comes to traffic, I, I agree that traffic's horrible. I am, I agree with that, and I'm not even sure if there was a possibility where there can be conversation with the school district and even the applicant, where there can be, provide a access for the students to go from there to the school or from school there, the students who live there, right? For me, the drainage, it's, that sounds like, if I'm not mistaken, it was a county that did the drainage out there, and then it was the city that eventually took over when we incorporated direct. But it sounds to me that there was a lack of foresight, and that, and thinking for, okay, well, this is the rural area. We needed to start actually helping the rural area, and we need to actually start cleaning these drainage and proceeding forward on that. And Councilmember Brewer, I hear your concerns, and I'm right there with you when it comes to making sure that everyone is living in a safe and vibrant community, whether it's making sure that it's, it's rural. But I also agree with Councilmember Suin's comments when families want to have that feeling of living in the rural area, but at the same time, being able to have a house out there. So I'm stuck, I'm stuck, you know, trying to figure this out, and I would also appreciate if we would like to continue this conversation for a further time.
Well, if I could just.
Go ahead.
Sorry, Mayor, thank you. I mean, I, I think my, my thought about continuance is, is more about trying to, because I, I don't believe, there's no way that, that staff can, can finish analyzing the, the, the legacy issue at hand. However, there may be a, a interim solution in there that we, we are just, I just don't know. So if we were to do that, it would be for a brief, maybe one meeting, just to have staff and the applicant get together to, to have that conversation. Otherwise, it, in my opinion, it, it needs to come back for, for a final ruling. But it wouldn't be, it would not be indefinite, and it would not be a long period of time. My, that's my thought.
Thank you. So I have the, the benefit of trying to summarize what I've heard from my colleagues and opine myself. I hear a lot of concerns from the residents. I think some, even some red flags were raised of some of the gaps in the analysis, which I think are important, because I support the project's concept of what we're trying to achieve. I want to help make this project better and alleviate some of those concerns without it just being, I'm opposed to having this project, period. I, you know, I, I, I don't support that. I, I support the project. But what I would like to do is help address some of those outstanding questions and concerns to the best extent that we can. I would like to have an opportunity to visit the sites as well. I have not been able to do that. Of course, we were at a conference. I did have a conversation with the applicant during our trip, but I did not have the benefit of actually seeing for myself. So I think we're, Councilmember Brewer, thank you for being able to do that and re, meeting with our, with our residents. I think, Mr. Warner, you raised a lot of important questions, and I really think that we would benefit in, in making the best decision possible. And again, I support the concept of what we're trying to accomplish here. What I, what I want to do is be able to make the project stronger and be able to address the questions and concerns with that additional analysis that I think is, is missing. And I definitely don't want to delay this to an uncertain period. I hear there's at least three council members here who are in favor of continuing the item, and so I would lend my support for the continuation of that item with that additional analysis, with that limitation of no more than one month. So it's either the next meeting or the one after that, but I don't want this to be open-ended. And I know that's asking a lot of staff, but I think that having those additional questions and concerns addressed would make it, make this decision a lot easier, and hoping that in terms of the residents, maybe it provides some comfort to some of you. I don't think it's going to appease all of you, because some of you just oppose it on its, on its own merits. And that's fine. You're entitled to that as well. I do think that this project will add great value to the community, and so I'm not opposing the project. I just think that I want to help make this stronger and better, and if we can answer those questions, I think that that's a fair and prudent thing to do, so that we can factor in a lot of your concerns. And I definitely am very much in favor of hearing some of the analysis coming out of public works, and we don't want to really put the county off in terms of their responsibility. I do want to get here, get some information back from them. Of course, we cannot compel that, but we do have a relationship with our supervisor, and I think if we start there and be able to get those questions answered, I think we owe that to our residents, that we don't have another government entity abdicating some of their responsibilities, as well as the school district. I know these have been ongoing issues, but we do need to have a proactive plan to mitigate in the idea that emergency services, God forbid, cannot reach the residents. That is appalling. And I'm glad that you're well, Mr. Soros, and that your health is, and your well-being is important, as well as everyone who would be potentially impacted. But I want to be very clear. I support the project. I just want to help you make it stronger and better, and I, there is no downside in waiting that extra meeting or two to get that additional layer of analysis, which will be very important, and hopefully address some of your concerns. Of course, I know very well it's not going to address everyone's concerns, but to the extent that we can be prudent in our decision-making. And then in the meantime, I encourage the applicant, of course, to meet with us individually, and then I'm making myself available to come out to the Soros property, as I have on numerous occasions in the past for other reasons, and see some of these issues for myself as well. So that would, you know, hearing the consensus. So that would, you know, hearing the consensus from my colleagues.
I also would like to make myself available. I want to see what's-
Yeah, please, invite all of us.
Definitely want to be out there and I want to see what, what's going on as well.
Uh, before, before I go further, I just, I just want to say something right here because I got to get this off my chest. Um, when was the last time that the city has went out to the property to check out this village way along the back way of that property? Specific dates.
I don't have those specific dates with me today.
And that's what we need, yeah.
Sure.
Because if we're going to, if we're, if we're going to do a stakeholder process with the applicant and with the city, we need to go out there and look at that entire, um, route that goes up to the Laguna Creek. It's important that people see that. And it's important that people understand the, the gravity of it. Because if we're going to put the, that, that basin out there, and as the saying goes, you're going to have 15 straws into a cup, not to mention the other straws that are going to be in that cup. Less water will be available. And if we're in a drought, which California normally is, this is probably a once in a generation storm that we have seen. So in a case of a drought, how are we going to make up for the water? And on top of that, you have those other mitigations along that pathway that we really need to look at to modernize and upgrade. Because we can talk about the science and, and all we want, but the bottom line is, we need to do what's right for the neighbors that are in that vicinity and who will be in that vicinity. Because whether we approve this tonight or approve of this, because we're considering an ordinance amending the city of Elk Grove zoning map and a resolution approving a tentative subdivision map, design review for subdivision layout and tree removal permit for the Pleasant Grove Estates project. This is real. This is real stuff. We just can't look at this and pass over it. That's why the engineering team needs to look at the soils, really look at the soils and return results to us in plain English. What constitutes clay? What constitutes regular dirt or, or silt? Because that makes a big difference in the topography and how we do that, but it also affects the quality of life of, of, of the people that live around there. We have a lot of people that have ag-based businesses that live in that area, that have a hard time getting, that have traffic mitigation issues. And that's another discussion we have to talk about on a different day, about making that easier as more traffic goes through. And especially as we start talking about the Laguna Creek Trail going out to Grantline Road. Those, that's another important issue we need to look at. We need to look, there's a lot of things we need to look at. And communication is key. If you know an issue is coming up that is going to affect your, um, project or something that will benefit your project, contact this council when you know it's going to be on the agenda, whether it be a month in advance, two weeks in advance. Do not wait until the Monday before. Yes, I was back east, but I would pick up the phone. You can ask any person in this room and any person throughout the city, that I will respond to you within 24 to 48 hours, normally within two. Because it's important. I realize the mag, that the magnitude of what we have here and what my role is in representing this particular part of the city. I lived this city. I've been from a city that was like this city and especially this district. Make no mistake, I care about this district. I love this district. So I will defend this district. If it makes sense, if it looks good, I will support it unequivocally. But if it's off, if it doesn't feel right, if it doesn't look right, we're going to have issues and we're going to have to talk through those issues. And that's the ones like tonight, it's not from raw emotion, it's from my analysis and assessment of this whole thing because I've been looking at it for a month. I see a lot of holes in this, in, in, in this report. I see a lot of holes in this, in this proposal. And the mayor says she wants to make it better. I want to see, I want to see if it can work. Because where it's at from, for safety mitigation issues, traffic mitigation issues, that's, that's problematic. Because you can have an urban neighborhood in a rural area and breathe fresh air, but if you have too many cars out there, it's going to be no different than any other suburb.
Mayor, I'd like to, like to make a motion to continue this item to the next council meeting for further technical analysis.
Thank you.
Before you do, Madam Mayor, I do have a statement just to, uh, clarify factual. I was not in Washington DC. I was here locally.
Yes, that's true.
Mr. Nuttall, I did get your, I did get your phone call on Friday and Monday, and I did return your call. I didn't have any questions at the time. The questions that I do have relative, are relative to the, the uncertainty in the room today relative to flooding. So I do hope you got my phone call. Okay, great. Thank you. So with that, I will second, uh, the motion to carry it to a date certain.
The next council meeting.
Um, no, no more than one month. So that's, that gives up to two meetings. Because we want to give staff enough time to prepare a report and do the, do their work.
Or how about, can we bring it back next council meeting?
So I just want to clarify that the full analysis of updating the storm drain master plan and, and looking at this issue holistically in the rural area is, is going to take a year or more, right? That is something that we're proposing in the next budget cycle. Looking at the immediate downstream issue, tributary three of Laguna Creek is something that we can go out, we can walk, we can observe, um, and, and we can identify, you know, what needs to happen. That's something that's going to take a, a conversation with the community, right? We heard that there's private improvements that are in that ditch, uh, that need to be taken care of. That's something that they're going to have to be willing to address, um, or that we're going to have to be willing to address and, and take ownership of those private issues. So, uh, we can certainly get there within the next couple of weeks as far as investigating that ditch, but the broader issue, the uncertainty about flooding in the area in general, that's something that's going to take a, a much, much longer time.
Sure.
Absolutely. And, and also I'm not looking, I mean, my, my personal feeling is that downstream issue is not on this project applicant's responsibility, right? That's why I don't think, you know, but the conversation to talk about, um, perhaps more creative things, I think is worthwhile. I just don't think it, it needs to wait a month. I, I also think-
That's fine. If you, if you're comfortable with that, Mr. Warner, I just didn't want to put that added pressure based on what you might already have, you know, that you're working on.
As far as Public Works is concerned, we can certainly investigate this ditch perhaps tomorrow. I mean, we're going to, we're going to put our best foot forward as we normally do and be absolutely, uh, hyper-responsive to these concerns. Um, I'd certainly love to hear from our development services team who's ultimately responsible for processing the application. We didn't, we don't look at, at this engineering issue that happens down in the development services department, so.
Right. And these, I mean, it is definitely a unique project. I did have a great, you know, I checked in with George Murphy, um, who represents the rural community and represents it very well. And one of the things that he brought up is just sort of as a reminder is the legacy problem. SCGA is responsible for the groundwater, groundwater, um, sustainability. So we need to make sure that we keep that in mind.
That is a great point. We're, we're a member of, of the groundwater authority. We're participating in preparing the groundwater sustainability plan as required by the state groundwater act. Um, and, and so that, that's a great point. I mean, the, the groundwater issues are, again, much more broad statewide-
Right.
-issues and in fact, much worse in other areas than, than Elk Grove.
Right.
So we can see it on the calendar next city council meeting?
Well, I think from an application standpoint, I mean, there's a lot to unpack here from an existing deficiency. We didn't talk about traffic and media. I don't know when our next, uh, two by two with the district is, but, um, certainly want to be able to come back, uh, as soon as possible for the applicant's concern, but we also want them to be successful in that-
Right.
-comeback. And if there's not enough information, I, I feel two weeks is pretty, uh, quick turnaround on some of these issues, um, you know? And we can review soil types. And I will say there's a condition on the project that it goes into further drainage analysis at improvement plans, where I've seen basins expand just because the preliminary analysis was, uh, not adequate enough. But, uh, the reason we don't require full-blown drainage analysis is just the costs associated with that during an entitlement process. So we require some preliminary requirements and then look at it in further depth, so, uh, during the improvement plan, so.
Well, if, if it's a mu, if it's a month what you need, then that's fine too.
So that would make it May 24th. We, we'd suggest that you continue it to a date certain for clarity.
Yeah.
So if, if that's a date you're comfortable with, you could amend your motion to-
Okay. Uh, amend it to be May, May 24th.
A second. Can I just ask a question? I want to make sure that staff understands exactly what we're analyzing because I heard a lot of different things. Is it, is it the traffic around the school? Because we're not going to have any, is it just related to drainage?
Yeah, drainage.
Just drainage?
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the traffic mitig, I mean, that, these are, those are ongoing discussions in general.
Yeah.
Is that, so we have a motion and a second to continue it to May-
24th.
24th. And I heard that there was a-
What is the actual motion?
To, to continue, to continue the application to May 24th.
Okay.
And we have a second. So all those in favor of continuing the item?
Aye.
Aye. Any noes?
No.
All right. We have four ayes and one no, so the item will continue to May 24th. Thank you. All right.
Mayor, it looks like we're probably not going to get done by 10. Do you want to waive the 10 o'clock rule?
Yes.
Unless you're going to move really fast in the next 20 minutes.
I mean, why don't we revisit it at 9:55 and see where we're at?
I don't know if it'll be that fast. It'll be nice, but.
All right. Um, next item, please. Hi.
Is this on?
Yep.
Okay. Can't hear it. Honorable Mayor and council members, um, the next item before you is the consideration of abandonment of right-of-way, uh, vacation of portion of Waterman Road in conjunction with the Triangle Point 75 parcel map. It was a condition of approval for the parcel map. The right-of-way is not in use at this time. I don't have a presentation for this. It's a public hearing and I would be happy to answer any questions on the item.
Thank you, sir. I'll declare the public hearing is now open and open up the public comment opportunity. And I don't see anybody signed up to speak, so I'll declare the public hearing is closed. And I look for a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make the motion to adopt resolution approving the vacation of a portion of Waterman Road right-of-way in conjunction with the Triangle Point 75 parcel map project, EG 13 dash 057 between the new realignment of Waterman Road and Waterman Court generally between Mosher Road and Grantline Road.
Second.
All right. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Next item, 9.1.
Hello. I'll go as quick as possible, I promise.
We won't make it through based on the speaker.
My name's Jody Moreno. I'm the Community Events and Special Projects Coordinator for the City of Elk Grove, and I have the next two items for you tonight. The first one is to give you information and receive direction on the fiscal year 23, 24 event sponsorship grant allocations, where we, um, offer applicants to apply for grants to do events here in the City of Elk Grove. Just a little bit of the basics on the program. It started in 2012. It's supported by the general fund. We do have criteria for all of the sponsorships. Our funding is focused on events with citywide significance that meet our goals. It is limited to nonprofit organizations and the event does have to be held here in Elk Grove. And any programming or operations are ineligible, and we do have other grants that folks can apply for that. The process was, we released the application in mid-January. It was advertising the citizen, our website, social media. We reached out directly to all previous and people that we knew were interested in applying for this. They were all submitted online and we did held a technical webinar to help grantees with the application process. And that was back on January 17th because we have a new online process. And then all of the applications were due February 24th. Another side note is that all grantees must be in good standing with the Secretary of State and the Registry of Charitable Trusts prior into entering into contract and throughout the process. So we do check that at like three different points during this process. For 22, 23 and 24, we received 43 eligible applications, which is the most we've ever had, which is really exciting. I think people want to have their events here in Elk Grove and we're trying to support all these nonprofits and all the good work that they do. The total amount requested did exceed $500,000 and that is between cash and in-kind, which is police, public works, facility use. The way that we go through these applications is we have an internal department representation that goes through them. We have members from the CSD and then an arts commission review panel of all the ones that are related to the arts. We look at the concept, the feasibility, if they've had the event before, um, can they attract regional visitors, um, what is their budget like and is it going to have a great impact in our city? I've got the whole list here. I will not go through them all. I can highlight a couple as we go through that are probably new to you, that you haven't seen before. Post 55 has just been formed. It's an additional post out at the Veterans Hall. And so they are asking for funding for some of their events. And I know you saw the Artners up here and they've done some great events in our city. Asian American Liberation Network is new to us and that's a really neat diversity and cultural event that they're doing. It's not new to the city, but it's new to our program. The Black Youth Leadership Project is new to the program. So they are on here for a back-to-school resource fair. Uh, we have the Veterans Day Parade that has come back and Elk Grove artists are brand new and they want to do an art extravaganza and competition. Um, Festival of the Arts is coming back. Actually, it's this coming weekend, the second one, so that's going to be a lot of fun. Um, a lot of more good events here. Holiday Parade of Lights. Fingers crossed, no rain this year and we can have the Holiday Parade of Lights during their illumination festival. And the Western Festival will be making a comeback in 2024. Fingers crossed for them too. Running of the Elk will be coming back. Uncorked and Uncapped, which was a first-year event last year at the Plaza, was really popular and they are coming back this year. We've got the Dickens Fair. We know that's a big one. And then the new one was from Live, uh, Lift Up, Love Always, um, proposing a Juneteenth event out at District 56. Uh, we've got the Sacramento Asian Pacific Cultural Village, another good diversity event using District 56. Um, we did just hear today from Sacramento Splash that they have withdrawn their application for lack of funding from other sponsorships. Strauss Festival. Uh, and then Fitness Without Borders. They've done some health events prior. Um, they're doing a new one, which is the Holistic Health and Fitness Expo and then the ever-popular Bounty on the Boulevard. We're looking for direction from council on funding allocations and then that these would be approved as part of the ESG event sponsorship grant allocations and it is adopted into the budget.
All right. Thank you for that excellent presentation. I'm excited to see the Western Festival will be returning. Um, so one of the things that we saw on there was the Historical Society asking for $3,000. And we just had a discussion, well, a lot of discussion, public comments regarding the Civil War days and, and the Historical Society being one of the main sponsors. I think, you know, being consistent with our practices, being inclusive and a city welcome to all. I'm not comfortable funding that. Um, I would encourage a conversation to take place between the Historical Society, some of the organizers, and maybe even our DNI commissioners, and I certainly would like to be a part of it. But if we're going to be consistent with the message of a city welcome to all, um, I'm personally uncomfortable with funding $3,000 for something, um, what the ask is for is, is fine. I don't have a problem. But the, the issues that have been raised by constituents is the hurt, the pain, the suffering that goes with, uh, the Civil War days. So, you know, I think this is an opportunity to have those conversations. I personally will not support that portion of the funding.
Mayor, uh, I, I do agree with that. I would just, to elaborate on, on your statement about having a conversation, because I heard one of the speakers mention, uh, about including other parts of history during that time as part of it. And I, I thought, well, that would be great if the DEI Commission and maybe some of them and Historical Society and, right? They, they, if they made that program, expanded it to be more comprehensive, that might be a way to move forward.
Yes. I, so I would, uh, table that portion of the ask indefinitely until, um, personally, you know, I, I, I want to see the Historical Society be much more inclusive in the work that they're, um, doing, particularly with our communities of color. So as stated, I will support all of the other funding asks without that one.
Although procedurally, I might suggest that we do public comment prior to deliberation.
Yes.
I, I'm not opposed to it. I'm simply stating we probably ought to have a conversation.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Point, Vice Mayor.
At this time, I will go ahead and open up the public comment opportunity. Um, let me see here. I do not have anyone's sign. Wait, no, yes, I do. Hold on, my thing hasn't caught up here.
That's why I was saying that 10 o'clock rule's not-
Let me see here. I do not have anyone's sign. Wait, no, yes, I do. Hold on, my thing hasn't caught up here. Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, you're right. You're right.
Aaron Martinelli is the first one.
I was locked in on the other item. Yes, we have a number of speakers, and you already know where I feel about one of them. We'll start with Aaron Martinelli, followed by Brett Bartholomew.
Good evening, Mayor, and good evening, council members. Thank you so much. My name is Aaron Martinelli, and I'm representing the Elk Grove Fine Arts Center. The Art Center has made community involvement a priority since our inception 15 years ago. And since 2013, the Art Center has held a student art show every year for a different high school in the Elk Grove Unified School District. Now we want to reach the entire Elk Grove Unified School District through a district-wide art show, where prize monies as well as ribbons are awarded. We're committed to bringing high-quality art to community through monthly art receptions with our first Saturdays. Many of you have attended various events that we've had, featuring outstanding regional artists, themed art competitions, and special events like our past Open Fine Art Competition, Art Tours, Small Treasures with over 60 artists. And our recent Festival of the Arts in Old Town Plaza, which drew over 1,500 attendees last year, and will be held this Saturday, April 29th, from 10 to 5:00. We hope to see you there as well. We brought in our reach last year with the gallery participating in its first national clay show in Sika in conjunction with other galleries all over the Sacramento region. Additionally, we grew our annual art competition to an annual festival of art showcasing performing arts as well as visual arts to draw in students and community members. Our vision is to see an art and entertainment district grow in Old Town Elk Grove. We are looking forward to making Elk Grove a vibrant art scene for our community. All income goes directly back to our operational costs and our arts programming, and we only have one part-time employer, who's our gallery manager and curator, Darcy Robertson. All of the rest of our event planning and implementation is done by volunteers, and we also rely heavily on grants from the City of Elk Grove. Thank you very much for your continued support for our community services and special events, and also our annual Big Day of Giving, our largest income producers, for approximately 25% of our income. So it's quite significant. The Elk Grove Fine Arts Center also partners with local high school, district art educators, and other nonprofits. We also partner with the Journey of Hope, who works to share real-life stories with artists on mental health challenges. I just want to say that we look forward to growing, and we look forward to your support. The arts play a vital role in our community, impacting public safety, youth development, health issues, tourism, economic development, and quality of life. And in addition to the arts industry, has a positive impact on California of $1 billion per year. So the nonprofit art sector also has huge social impact in reducing juvenile delinquency, recidivism for released prisoners. And when you think of some of the most culturally diverse and renowned cities on earth, they have at least one thing in common, and that is art. So from local galleries to life-size murals, a community full of art is a community full of culture. And research has shown that cities that emphasize art have more civic and social engagement, better child welfare, and even lower poverty rates. Each of you are ensuring a long-lasting legacy of the visual arts right here in our community, and we thank you for your ongoing support. We hope that you'll consider the full asking that we did ask in order to support our Elk Grove Unified School District. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. We'll go ahead and leave at the time.
Oh, yeah. I moved away with the 10 o'clock rule.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, we'll continue on. Next speaker is Brett Bartholomew, followed by Dominique Park.
Hello, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. I'll be brief. I'm here representing the Western Festival Board. We appreciate the grants that you're offering us. It's going to allow us to have the event next year. Fingers crossed, right? So, it won't be this weekend, but we'll be coming back next year. So we're much appreciated the support you're offering to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Dominique Park, followed by Mia Foster. I have you signed up for two speakers, so we'll split it up. Mia Foster and Maria King.
Good evening, or night. Madam Mayor and members of City Council, and Jody Moreno. My name is Dominique Park, and I thank you for having me here to speak on behalf of Elk Grove Aquatics Club. Elk Grove Aquatics Club has been dedicated to promoting swimming for nearly 30 years. The team strives to provide an inclusive environment in which each swimmer can improve upon their performance and learn the importance of good sportsmanship. You remember me? September, October, no, October, August, I think it was? So last, in August last year, Elk Grove Aquatics Club hosted the Western Zone Age Group Championship for swimmers ages, between the ages of 10 and 14. And during that time, through the support of the City of Elk Grove and the event sponsorship grant, this meet generated an astounding $2.3 million in business sales and $157,000 in local taxes. Also impacting our club, our club has been fortunate to introduce an additional, introduce over 50 Elk Grove families to the sport of competitive swimming, in addition to our existing club. We applied for the event sponsorship grant to allow us to further build our swim team. A swim team can provide a sense of belonging and community to our city's families. Our swimmers meet new people, form lifelong friendships, and connect with others who share a common interest in the sport. Whether it's learning how to swim for the first time, improving technique, training for competitive events, a swim club can provide the resources and support needed to achieve one's goals and reach new levels of proficiency in the sport. Through the support of the City of Elk Grove and the event sponsorship grant, our team is hosting the Bill Rose Classic, a championship meet bringing over 500 competitive athletes from Northern California and Nevada area all to our home pool, the Elk Grove Aquatics Center at District 56. I really thank you for your time, your support, and your approval in favor of Elk Grove Aquatics Club. Finally, I encourage you, and I look forward to seeing you there at the meet that held this July. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Mia Foster, followed by Maria King.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council members. My name is Mia Foster. I am here in support of Fitness Without Borders event sponsorship grant application for the Holistic Health and Fitness Expo. My hope is that with this event, we can further address and promote health equity and inclusion of other holistic cultural medicine. As we know, health is not only an absence of disease or illness, but it is also a state of complete physical, mental, emotional, and spiritual well-being. Following the recent global pandemic, I do want to highlight the importance of health equity and the impact that this pandemic had on the mental health of Americans throughout our nation. Nearly one in five adults and one in six children will experience some form of mental health disorder in their lifetime. And in Sacramento County alone, more than 300,000 people live with a mental illness. Two-thirds of people with mental illness never seek professional help. In addition, there are alarming disparities in mental health status, social determinants of health, and access to treatment experience between racial groups. Such barriers are exacerbated by lack of cultural, relevant, and integrated care, and cultural healings often tend to be perceived as alternative. These system disparities can lead to worsened symptoms and poor quality of life if treatment is unavailable or not culturally responsive. As an example, data from a 2020 survey conducted by the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration indicates that Asian-Americans are least likely to receive mental health treatment, with only 20.8% of Asian adults with a mental health illness receiving treatment in 2020 compared to those of other racial backgrounds. Asian-Americans ages 18 to 25 reported serious mental illness and serious suicidal thoughts or plans to commit suicide. Attempted suicides have doubled over the last decade, with Mental Health America reporting that one out of every 10 young Asian-American adult struggles with major depression. The event proposed by Fitness Without Borders will go a long way in promoting the well-being of individuals in our community. Moreover, this grant will enable us to provide a range of services that cater to the diverse needs of individuals in our community. Through this event, we can ensure that individuals are taught about access to the support they need to achieve optimal health and wellness on every level. So your support in this transformative project will be invaluable towards promoting health equity and cultural inclusivity. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. I'm Maria King. I'm the founder of Fitness Without Borders. It was founded in 2007, and we have been serving the Elk Grove community for 16 years, through high school clubs, through a middle school program at Albionni Middle School, as well as our primary project, which is No Excuse Moms. It started here in Elk Grove, and it has reached over hundreds of groups globally. And it started right here, and that's actually the same vision I have for this expo, because I have been involved in so many things, fitness, for the last 25 years. I have seen it change and evolve, and I know in my heart that we need to focus on mental, spiritual, physical health, not just the physical. And I have seen so many different expos, and there is nothing like the one I, we are proposing right now, which is the Holistic Health and Fitness Expo, which is going to bridge eastern and western modalities. I'm thinking of the chiropractors, the physical therapists, not just the gyms, but also the yoga studios, the Pilates studios, the healers out there, the Reiki practitioners, the massage therapist. All of those people, I'm thinking, will be involved in this unique expo that will bring in people from Sacramento or maybe even the Bay Area, because the truth is, there's nothing like this that we're proposing. So I'm really excited that you're considering this expo. We've done an event sponsorship with Elk Grove in the past. It was very successful. And so I'm truly hoping you will honestly consider supporting us, showing up, and obviously financially supporting us. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And Ms. King was our final speaker on this item. So I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment opportunity. So I think I've made my feelings clear on the Historical Society's ask. I am looking forward to the holistic fitness. I was actually proud to sit with you when you sort of pitched that concept to me a few months ago. I think it's a great idea, and we definitely need more in the fields of holistic fitness and medicine, and particularly with a focus on our AAPI community who do not seek help and find themselves in troubles often. So I look forward to being a part of that. So thank, and thank you to the other speakers that came forward. Other comments, questions from my colleagues?
I'm just excited to see so many events continue to happen in our city. So, no one can say there's nothing to do in Elk Grove.
No, and from a broad spectrum of different categories, that's what's refreshing, is to see the diversity of just even the events that cater to a wide variety of people. So thank you for that. So my, my, my ask was to, maybe it's my motion, was to remove the Historical Society, but I'm comfortable with all of the others.
So, Madam Mayor, procedurally, let me ask, is that something that can, it seems as though a conversation can be had?
Yeah.
And that we can restore...
Goodwill.
Goodwill, thank you. Goodwill, right? We can restore goodwill. Is this something we can bring back again? Can we, this is not a, you're not getting it in 2023. Yeah, is this?
I would need conversations. Yeah, I would want conversations to take place, and seeing if there's a coming of the minds, if you will.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't think that event was, you know, intended to be what is implied, and, and at least I don't think so, but I think that's why the conversation's needed.
The conversation's important, and here's the thing, you know, I've spoken to a number of them when this was first brought to my attention last week, and a couple of them broke down in tears. I can't overlook the pain of something, it's, you know, I want to have empathy.
Absolutely.
And I may not be, you know, aware of what that may look like for me, but to walk in someone's shoes, to go through, we heard those powerful statements tonight of what this means to them. We have to have that conversation, because right now, you know, our country, our community, you know, is divided on a lot of areas. And this is not a political conversation. This is not politics. This is about a community that has been disenfranchised, is in pain and suffering. And these kinds of events can cause greater pain and open deeper wounds, but without having an understanding from everyone coming together, and that's where the beauty of conversations. People aren't talking to each other, and that's why we are in the positions that we are. We need to have those conversations, and I think that the healing comes from there, but a broader understanding that education is the most empowering tool that we have. And so without having those educational opportunities from all sides, having a seat at the table, then, you know, I'm left to a place where I'm not willing to further reinforce those wounds.
Yeah, I think we're all in agreement there. I think we're just saying, we're all saying, right, that we want to see that conversation happen.
Definitely no, but it's not right now until certain things take place.
Yeah, we can approve tonight's action with the removal of the Historical Society recommendations, and then we'll take your direction and start a conversation with the Historical Society and bring in members of our DNI Commission, and then we can report back. We could always bring an item in the future back regarding funding if you'd like.
I want to jump in on this real quick, because I appreciate all your, your explanations. And I truly appreciate this, but a conversation really needs to take place between the Elk Grove Historical Society, the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission, but also the women who are here in this room.
Yeah, I agree.
I need to be a part of that conversation as well. Let's not forget about, because pink outfit in the room.
Yes, sir.
But, um, when I was a CSD Director, I was their ad hoc member to the Elk Grove Historical Society. The conversations of trying to remember Elk Grove's history, Elk Grove's past, and that's why the Old Town Hotel exists. That's why all the activities that happens at the Old Road School exists, so people have a firm understanding or a good understanding of Elk Grove, of where they came from and its heritage. We don't talk about the actual rebellion that happened over where near Lent Ranch is at. There is, so when you go on, on West Stockton Boulevard and make that turn to McCallum Estates Winery, pay attention to this stone that is sitting at that bend that faces Highway 99. Pull over sometime and really take a look at it, and then Google the actual Ranchers Rebellion that took place there. Because where Highway 99 is at, that is where the actual rebellion took place. Blacks were involved in that. I can't say African-Americans, because we weren't classified as African-Americans back then. But it's, but we want to pay attention to that in proximity to the history of Elk Grove and how it's went from the township to the town with the blinking lights to the beautiful city that we see today. And the Historical Society, heart in hand, that's what they, that's what they do. So, and rightfully so. People should be upset when they see the actual thing for Civil Rights Days, because as noted, that CSD stopped, stopped the whole concept of having Civil War Days. We would have Pioneer Days, but Civil War Days was a whole different discussion because of the wounds that it could cause. And you're doing it in a public park, paid by taxpayers, all of us. And noise mitigations in the surrounding neighborhoods. So as they moved, as the, as the event was moved from Elk Grove Park now at Mann Ranch, the Mann family is not nefarious. They're not bigots. Let's just kill that right now. David Lima, who's part of the Linda Mae Lima Foundation.
Yeah.
Not a bigot.
Yeah.
Let's, let's stop that right now. But we need to have an earnest conversation. It's high past time, because I know Phyllis, I know Fahiza, I know all them women. And, and, and when they reached out to the mayor and myself, filled with emotion and pain, I totally got it. And to see the sign in front of the old hotel in Elk Grove Park is like, man, the conversation needs to be had. It really does. So if we table these two items, have the conversation, and then come back and see if everything's okay, then we can grant them the funding, but yeah, the conversation needs to be had. It really does. I, I've held my lip on this long enough, and I'm just, and I, and I want to say this, and this is filled with emotion. This is not filled with analytical, because I know what it's like to be, to not feel like being a part of a team. I know what it's like to not... I know what it's like to not, to feel like not being part of a community, especially when a relative of yours, 50 years ago, man of God, runs for city council and doesn't win. Best candidate of the four candidates running for that, for city council down where I'm from, didn't win because of what he was. Cousin of mine was on the city council, they never made her mayor because of what she was. Baby cousin of mine sits on that same city council, stands up for what he believes is right, and for someone to have the audacity to say, "We never liked you, we just tolerated you", that cuts deep, and that's why the conversation needs to be had.
Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So we have direction?
Got it.
Thank you. But I hope your uncle's proud, because you're sitting here now. You're sitting here now. You are your ancestors' wildest dreams. Okay, thank you. Onto our next item. I'm going to lose my voice for sure.
You're almost there.
All right, on to some more fun events. I'm here to give you a presentation on a new event series that the City of Elk Grove will be putting on for residents. We really have such beautiful properties here that the city owns, between District 56 and Old Town Plaza. We really want to show them off. We have some partner events out there, we have some renters, but we haven't had a ton of our city events out there. And we want to encourage gathering and have people come there on a regular basis. And so our response to that was, we came up with an event series called Fridays in the Grove. So I want to share that with you. So it's going to offer free family fun to all residents, and it's going to expand our current five events that we currently have, which are Big Truck Day, Party on the Palms, Fourth of July Multicultural Festival, and the Illumination Festival. So with the addition of this, we're going to have a lot more events in town, and they're going to be taking place at our own city facilities to show off how beautiful they are. They're going to be, for consistency, the first Friday of the month at Old Town Plaza and the third Friday of the month at District 56. And this will run May through October. So we're taking advantage of the warm summer nights and how everyone wants to get out. They will all be outdoor activities. And you all met Jordan Salario earlier today. In order to do this, we needed to bring on another team member. So dynamic duo and a whole city backing us. We're going to have some really great events in the city. I'm going to go through quickly on them. You all receive one of these postcards on your seat, and for anyone in the audience, there's some in the back. And this is kind of what it is, it's dual-sided. So anyone that grabs one of these at our events will be able to see that on one side, we're listing all of the events in Old Town Plaza. On the other side, District 56, there's a QR code people can look at, and we've given some, you know, small bits of details here, that what time the movie starts, that they should bring chairs and blankets to enjoy the amenities that we have out there and enjoy the things that we're going to be offering. Speaking of what we're going to be offering, I'm going to go over the Old Town Plaza ones really quick. We're kicking it off next Friday with a silent disco at Old Town Plaza. I don't know if anyone's ever been to a silent disco. They hosted at the California State Fair. It's a pretty unique concept, where you put headphones on when you come in. There's three channels. There is hip-hop, throwback, and Top 40. And you can choose your channel. Yeah. And there'd be a live DJ as well. The live DJ will be doing the throwback channel, and he'll be speaking to people too. And the other two channels are MP3, and they're already pre-programmed. These is completely free for anyone to attend. It will be fenced off just because we don't want the headphones leaving, but we can take a capacity of 200 at a time. And so if they can't get in, we also have some lawn games, some glow-in-the-dark Connect Four. We've got two food trucks on site, and it's just going to be a lot of fun. We hope you all come out. So this is what we're kicking off the series with. And then throughout both places, we will have movie nights. And a lot of them will tie into some of the diversity months. So like you see in Kanto on here, that's during Hispanic Heritage Month. So we do have some tie into, you know, our diversity here in Elk Grove. For Country in the Plaza, we're going to bring out line dancing lessons and have a live band, and we're going to teach people how to line dance and enjoy out there. We will have food trucks at all of these events for purchase. And then we are going to do a comedy night in October at the Plaza. That will be the one event that will be ticketed, and it'll be 18 over, and it will have a price of $10, the only event in the whole city that we actually charge for. For District 56, we're kicking it off with Turning Red movie. And then Wagon Walk is back, and I don't know those of you who remember it. The last time we did it was in 2018, where folks can bring their four-legged friends, and they will be at the preserve, and they'll walk around the preserve. We've got Pet Club coming out with a bone bar. We've got Friends of Elk Grove Animal Shelter, and our own Elk Grove Animal Services out there with us, so that'll be a fun event. Paint at the Preserve is something we're going to try during the daytime. We've seen a really big success with Big Truck Day and families coming out to enjoy those kind of things. And so we think moms with younger kids might come out. We're also asking the senior center to join us, since they have a rock painting thing that they have done at District 56. We'll give them a map where places along the Walk of the Preserve, they can drop their rocks, and it would just be a really fun day. Another movie night, and then salsa on the avenue will tie into Hispanic Heritage Month. We'll have a live band out there and a dance professor teaching people how to salsa. So if any of you are experts, we could use some help there. In addition to Fridays in the Grove, with the addition of Jordan to our team, you know, we have all these partner markets, right? We have Food Truck Mania, we have Neighborhood Market, we have the Vintage Market, and we have the Farmers Market. And we've never really been able to have a presence at those markets just because we've only had one staff, now we have two. So Jordan's going to be at the markets on a regular basis. She's going to build a relationship with the market managers. She's going to be showcasing everything the city has to offer, and she's reached out to all the departments, because we typically have two booths at these events. And she's done a great job. She doesn't have anything left for Neighborhood until what month? September, so she's already gotten a lot of departments to sign up and come out there with her. So we'll have two booths side by side. We'll be promoting everything we have going on and just really be able to have our own presence out there. Even though the markets are doing a great job, we want to be able to showcase what we're doing. And that is Fridays in the Grove, and Ms. Jordan joining our team.
Wow, how exciting.
Jordan, you're going to be busy, but it sounds like a fun busy.
Hold on, I'm going to, before our Vice Mayor reminds me. I'm going to open up the public comment opportunity. That's what happens when you're functioning on two hours of sleep. I don't see anyone signed up, so I'll close the public comment opportunity.
And go.
And go.
I'm excited, I was just saying, Jordan, you're going to be very busy. Mayor, you're going to bring, is it?
Denarius, my dog.
Denarius, yeah, to the wagon walk.
Absolutely, I'll have a pink tutu on her.
I can't wait.
To make her look less like a pity.
Rod and I will be at Silent Disco if anybody wants to.
I'll join you.
This is, this is exactly what our residents want, more fun here in Elk Grove. And so it's just wonderful to see all of these events that are family-friendly, that, you know, just for different interest groups of who, you know, maybe someone will come to all of them. But these are, these are great, and I just love seeing them. Are we going to promote them even through, like, Explore Elk Grove and?
Yes, yeah, they've already got Silent Disco on their website. So yeah, we've got marketing with on the electronic billboard on 99, and we have, you know, different ways we're trying to reach out. We're promoting five events in May right now, and we've got a lot going on.
Yeah, this is exciting. The weather is finally back and get to go back outdoors and connect with our community. So I'm excited to participate in many, if not all. Any other comments from colleagues? All right, well, thank you so much for that awesome presentation. All right, next up are Council Comments, Reports, and Future Agenda Items. Anyone have anything to report? I'll just do it that way.
Well, I would say just because, I'll keep it quick, but because we've alluded to it so many times, right, cap to cap, and I'll let everybody else weigh in on theirs, but on the Transportation Committee, we had a very productive meetings. And I'll just say that Senator Padilla is, and our very own Congressman Bera, Congressman Matsui, they are such great leaders for our region. I mean, they, they really want to get everything they can for us to progress the projects that we have going forward. So we got some great feedback from them, as well as the, on the transportation side, the agencies, DOT, FHWA, FTA, et cetera, so thank you.
Yeah, those, go ahead, Councilwoman Spees.
Oh, I got an easy one. I didn't get to go to cap to cap, I just got to let you know, it's termite season. So if you see little black bugs with wings in your house, they're not ants, they're termites. And from, from what I heard from the pest control people, it's going to be worse in Elk Grove this year because of the rains, because they're subterranean. So I say it jokingly, but watch out for those little buggers, they'll eat your floor.
Like, maybe some, you know, when we do what's like our vector control and mosquitoes, some sort of reminder of being safe and being on the lookout.
I can talk about it every night if you want.
Yeah, and I'm good, I'm good, you can spare us that. Yes, I would echo, cap to cap was an excellent opportunity for our, how does it, 21 cities and six county, 22 cities and six counties, participating with a record number of attendees. This delegation was the largest in there, it was 51 years strong. So was happy to be part of the leadership panel discussions and also joined on an offshoot meeting from cap to cap, joined SACRT and the General Manager Henry Lee, with the Transit Authority and having a separate meeting for not only advocating for increased funding, but also light rail modernization and expansion, of course, to our city, the airport, and others. So just a great series of meetings. I've lost my voice from all the advocacy. I think a number of us, and you're on your way to losing your voice, so it's what comes with the territory. But it was great to lead such a strong team, and Elk Grove was very well represented and very well, highly regarded, because they, many of our colleagues throughout the region talked about what a strong team we have here in Elk Grove, our strong governance team and all the great work that's taking place. It does not go unnoticed from the region, so thank you.
So I was on the Land Use Natural Resources Team, and we met with the Corps of Engineers, we also met with the Environmental Protection Agency, talked about challenges that is happening in the areas of building and making sure that regulatory relief in terms of tearing down some of the red tape and streamlining some of the processes to help make that work a lot easier. So, because as we know, we are doing some building. Our area, Elk Grove specifically, in all those meetings that I've been in, and was tagged team by CSD Director Angela Spees. So there was a Spees presence.
You got the best Spees.
And we, and we had a great time in those meetings. But we had, no, we had very, we had very positive meetings, and Congressman Mike Thompson's staff met with their legislative director, met directly with Congressman Bera and with Congresswoman Matsui. And they definitely have their finger on the pulse and have the needs of what we, of what we really need here, along with Congressman Doug LaMalfa. And so even though he is further north, he and his staff, they definitely have their finger on the pulse. And so we've asked, not, we've made an ask where we will do a letter for them to support the regional effort on those regulatory relief my deals, and it looks like they are on board to help. And so it's just, it just can't be more proud to represent Elk Grove and for us all to be there. Every single office, every single official who we've spoken to that represents the Sacramento region, business leaders, they were, they were not only were they complimentary, but they were like, you guys are really doing the right things, you have a great team there, and we are really pleased that you are in the room with us for this week. So that was a great takeaway, really good feeling. So that's all, that's part of my report from cap to cap.
Thank you. Councilmember Robles?
Yes, for me, I'm also losing my voice. It's probably because I speak a little bit loud whenever I'm over there. But it was, it was super fun, super exciting. They just see a lot of regional stakeholders over there and the conversations that we're having, and the conversations we're having about Elk Grove. I joined Civic Amenities, so they were touring restaurants and economic development, and even rooftops, so how do you do that when you're trying to urbanize a little certain area? We have an amazing project that we're working on, Project Elevate, and even some ideas were, how do you provide certain things in certain developments? So I was pretty excited about it. Also had great conversations with certain restaurant owners, which are really great restaurants in Sacramento, won't name any names, but we're definitely going to be trying to have a conversation on how do we bring them here to Elk Grove. And in addition to that, everybody was kind of jealous of Elk Grove. Just, we all get along, like, we all just get along, and they're like, Elk Grove is fun. I'm like, that's why you guys need to come out here. So it was a pretty good, good conference. Again, thank you to Congressman Bera, Congresswoman Matsui, and all the other representatives there. They really were there, they were at every meeting. They were listening to our concerns, and we really appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Next up is our adjournment, so we will adjourn our meeting at 10:25. Thank you, everyone.